Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hubley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pew, Mayor Protem and District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Golly, what a crowd. You guys are a good-looking bunch. Hey, welcome to the August 27th regular meeting of the Columbus City Council. We are glad you're here to join us. And we're going to begin this meeting the same way we begin all of our meetings, and that's by asking God's grace and His watchful eye over these proceedings. So I'm going to ask Bishop Porterfield from Kingdom Power Community Church of Love to come forward and pray for us. Yes, sir, come up to the podium. Thank you for joining us, too.
Good evening, sir. Going to ask that we all stand if we will. And grab someone by the hand because I believe where there's unity, there's strength. And we want God's grace to be upon us even on today. So Father, we thank you for this evening. First of all, asking that you forgive us for anything that we have said or done that's not like you. We thank you for leadership on this evening, God. We thank you for the council. We thank you for the mayor. We pray now that you would give them vision for our community, God, where our community will grow in each district. We pray for everyone that's here even on today, God. We thank you for their safe travel and their arrival. Now, God, we pray your blessings upon this meeting on today. And we ask all this in Jesus' name we pray. Amen? Amen.
Bishop, thank you so much for joining us. And please thank your church and congregation for sharing you with us tonight. All right, we've got a couple of other members of council that are on their way, but we have a few other things that we're going to take advantage of, or take a moment to take care of. And we're going to invite the Cub Scout Pack 35 from St. Luke to come up to the well. They're going to lead us in our pledge. If the rest of you would please stand.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. If you would, before you sit down, if you would, wait for, take turns with the microphone and give us your name and how old you are. And if you want to, tell us where you go to school.
My name's Maxwell. My name's Maxwell, and I go to school at Britt David.
My name is Woodrow, and I go to school at Britt David, and I'm eight.
My name is Jacob, and I go to school at St. Luke.
My name is Luke, and I go to school at St. Luke.
My name is Caleb, and I go to Britt David. I am, I am eight years old.
All right, a few more.
My name is Jake. I'm 10, and I go to St. Luke as well.
Kayle Casey, and I go to Britt David, and I'm 11 years old.
And the leaders want to introduce yourselves?
I'm not going to tell you. Well, I'm 42, and I work at Columbus State.
Hey, I'm Griff Morpeth.
Welcome.
And I work at Country's, and my kids are, go to St. Luke.
Well, welcome. Thank y'all very much. If we could, I know we've got some parents here or family members. You want to raise your hand so we can recognize you for raising such fine young men? Thank you. Thank you, guys, very much for being here. We appreciate you, and hopefully we'll get you back sometime. All right, well, what we'll do is we have a couple of actions we have to take, but we'll need to wait till we have a quorum. And there's a few that are probably caught in the traffic. So what we'll do is we'll move into the presentation by our Crime Prevention Director. And so, Mr. Brown, you want to come forward? We'll go ahead and jump to you, sir, while we're waiting on the others now. Okay, good. We'll go ahead and do this piece first. Now, Council, as you remember, we've received a jump drive with all of these applications in great detail. And I know you have been asking your questions of Mr. Brown. Are there any questions of the ones that are on there for him to go over tonight that, any further questions that anybody would like pulled? All right, well, seeing none, what I'd like to ask you to do, Mr. Brown, is just, if you'd just give us the name of the recipient and just a brief three or four-word explanation of what they do.
Yes, sir. Okay. All right, and my page should match here, so if it doesn't, I apologize. The first one is Big Brother, Big Sister for $20,000, and it's a mentoring program that operates citywide. You just want me to go down through the list, Mayor, each one of them? Or y'all want to wait to vote on each?
I think since there were no questions, we can, you want to vote them one at a time? Okay, got a motion and... Counselor House?
You want me to express my request for recusal for that one?
You may.
You can't? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself from Number 29, the Saarun Spice Project as far as voting on it.
Okay. Counselor House has requested a recusal. I need a motion from council.
(Inaudible).
There's a motion, there's a second? Motion and second to recuse Counselor House. All those in favor on Number 29, all those in favor, please say aye. We can?
I personally feel too close to that project because I've been involved with the group. I'm in a number of events, and I just feel like I'm, like I said, I'm just too close to it. I'm not on the board, but I'm not comfortable taking a vote. Obviously, I support it since I go to all the meetings, all the meetings, but I prefer not to be forced to take a vote.
Okay. There's a motion and second to allow recusal. Any further discussion? Counselor Barnes?
No, I'm just, we can go to them.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, you're recused.
I need to recuse myself from 19 Literacy Alliance.
From the Literacy Alliance. There's a request from Counselor Barnes to be allowed to recuse himself on the Literacy Alliance. Motion and second, any discussion?
Yes.
A reason, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Need a reason for the record.
Pardon?
Reason for the record to read into the record.
I'm not on the board.
Right.
But I've been involved in it. That's my reason.
Okay. Basically, the same. So we've got a motion and a second because of too close a relationship with the petitioner.
Yeah, yeah, they're not in a relationship, yeah.
Okay. All those in, any other discussion to that particular one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you're recused from the Literacy Alliance. Counselor House?
I just need to correct the record. I thought the one I, I got the number wrong. It's not 29, it's 30.
But it is Saarun.
Saarun Spice.
It is Saarun, okay. I think we're good with Saarun, so that's good. Any others that feel the need to request a recusal? All right, well, then, I'll entertain a motion for Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
(Inaudible).
All right, motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, do we want to cue that or just take a voice vote? We'll take a voice vote. We'll cue, we'll cue it. That's what I said. All right, please enter your votes. All right, that is approved.
Motion and a second to approve item 3, the Boys and Girls Club.
Any discussion? All right, all those, if you would, please cue it. Yes. We need to walk through the... Hang on just a second. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I really think we need to hear from Mr. Brown on each one of these before we make a motion, not only for the record, but for the people who are here and the people who are watching to know what we're doing and how much we're doing and why we're doing it.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree. In fact, here's probably the easiest way since there are so many. If there's one that anybody has a question on, let's pull that off, set it aside, and let him go through the entire list, and then we'll take the entire list in its totality, and we'll go back and revisit any that were pulled. Is there any that anybody would like pulled to discuss individually? All right, seeing none, Mr. Brown, let's go through the entire list.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll take a vote for all of them.
Okay.
We'll pull Number 30 and Number 19.
Okay. I'll go to the Big Brothers, Boys and Girls Club since you didn't vote on that one. That was the DPI program, which is a program that, it stands for Delinquency Preventive Initiative, which deals with some of the most at-risk children within our school population. They work with anywhere from 45 to 50 kids, and it's very intensive. It's an expensive program. We don't completely fund it 100%, but it's been, it's made a significant impact on a lot of lives. Last, this past year, we had 37 to actually finish the program. And to put that in perspective for you, that takes that person who was probably going to be expelled from school. That's how far these kids are. And it puts them in this program and continues to allow them to attend school and to hopefully graduate. The difference is if they were to be in the juvenile system, it would probably run taxpayers around $250,000 to $275,000 a year. And we're spending roughly $20,000, $30,000, so. The Bridge of Columbus program is a GED program. It also deals with more intensive need-based. 18 to 23 is the general range for those individuals. And they guide them through the process of passing the GED and going on to further their education or into the job market. Building Towards Wellness is a program that educates the community leaders, churches, schools about sex trafficking and how our children basically are being exploited, which has been extremely successful. They also work a lot with Micah's Promise, who is also on this list. Let's see, Changing Faces Within. Ma'am? Yes, ma'am. I apologize. The Bridge program is for $15,000. Boys and Girls Club is for 30. Building Towards Wellness is for $20,000. The next one is Changing Faces Within, which is $15,000. Changing Faces Within is a program that operates out of the jail. It's a ministry that, to some extent, handholds the females that are released from the jail population. What we've discovered is, is these individuals, these females, are extremely high-risk to be brought back into a bad relationship and end up in a life of crime towards the end. And what Changing Faces Within does is they position them back to support centers, to, whether it be Hope Harbor or other organizations, and they kind of handhold that process. Columbus Museum. Columbus Museum was operating before we got involved with them. They had been operating with Elizabeth Candy and Warren Williams to bring the museum to these children. They've also incorporated the families into this, the parents. Their request is for $15,000. Columbus Community Center, $20,000. Columbus Community Center's been around for a long time. They don't really need a lot of introduction, but they are working with families that can't afford after-school care in most cases. They are the last line of defense for a lot of these kids, these latchkey kids. Columbus Police Department for $25,000. This is the Dare to Be Great program that was created out of our office in cooperation with Chief Born's office. And it works with the kids in the summertime. There's two components to it. One's Dare, which is the elementary side, and one's Great, which is the middle school side. And it operates for a month-long session during the summer, which involves teachers, it involves law enforcement, and mentors. Next is Columbus Scholars. Columbus Scholars is a program that helps with SAT, ACT prep, is where it's college preparatory for these children, 5th grade to 12th grade, on up into college. The aspect of it mostly is to help these kids that are at risk to get to the next level and go to college. They've been around for a while and have been extremely successful. Ben Holden, as many of you know, is one of the leaders of that program. So that's for $20,000. Columbus Symphony Orchestra, they're requesting $20,000. The program that came out of Columbus Symphony or CSO is the music, Making Music Matter. It is a program that was based off the El Sema program out of Venezuela. We had tried for years to bring this program into Columbus, but really didn't know how to do it. One of my former board members was instrumental in trying to work with CSO to make this happen. They have, they stemmed off of EYC, which was another program that our office created, Empowering Youth of Columbus, which we no longer fund. They work out of a federal grant. But the Making Music Matters program has seen a tremendous reduction in class behavior. They've seen a tremendous increase in test scores among the children involved. They started with downtown elementary, and they're continuing to spread. They're in three schools now, elementary side. Family Center of Columbus for $40,000. This is the FAST program under Family Center, which stands for Family and Schools Together. The FAST program works with the counselors inside the school to pull those kids that are significantly at risk, whether it be through academic or behavioral issues. And they bring the family into a program also. It's nine weeks, occurs in the school. There's a meal time, there's a recreation time, there's a counseling time. And so, it's pretty intensive for these kids. But these are the kids that, again, we would probably lose out of the school system if we didn't do something quick.
Did you skip over Number 11?
I did. Chattahoochee Valley Jail Ministry is the GED program ran by Neil Richardson. They're requesting $20,000. That program, the, I can't stress enough the significance of the GED program through Chattahoochee Valley Jail Ministry. With every child, every adult who goes through that program, they reduce their rate of recidivism by 30% as far as if they take the test or not. This year, I don't remember the number, but I think Neil had 70 graduate?
72.
72 took the test, and 33 graduated, 160 participated, right, Neil? Okay, sorry. I'm looking at my notes and going. They're requesting $20,000. Let's see, Girls Inc. Girls Inc. for $25,000. The Girls Inc. program, it's a multifaceted program. Some of it works with the Stride Right program, some of it works with the college readiness-type program. It's all little girls, obviously. The program, and I have the numbers here, so let me get to it. This year, they worked with 520 girls. They, every year, they see an increase in vocabulary readiness. If any of y'all know about the SAT and ACT, which I'm sure you do, that is a huge part of that. So they work hard with these girls to try to get them to the next level, to accelerate their education. But there's multi, it's a multifaceted program. It's not just about college, but it's about school in general. Next is Hope Harbor. Hope Harbor's requesting $30,000. We don't fund the Hope Harbor home. We fund the outside education of it. They do seminars, they do programs outside of the house itself and with police department, sheriff's office, the fire department. They do a multitude of these things. And they, this year, they worked with 404 individuals in nine different events that I can put my hands on. It's been more than that, but it's, it's, it's a, basically what we're trying to do is we're trying to make, again, like we did with the Micah's Promise program, we're trying to make these women less at-risk to become part of that situation. And it reduces the level of crime. It also reduces the level of violence in the house, which also stems the tide of violent behavior from children. So there's tons of studies that support that program. The next one is Junior Marshals Program, requesting $10,000. It is the program that comes out of the Marshals Office that deals with middle school children. They deal with two, they deal with 100 kids, if I'm not mistaken, that they work with. These are the leaders inside the school. If you've ever gone to a middle school that's dealt with the Junior Marshals program, a lot of times, you'll be greeted by the Junior Marshals, at least in the past times that I've been there. And it's a mentoring, tutoring, community project kind of program that's been with the Marshals Office for many years. Let's Grow Steam for $20,000. The Let's Grow Steam program, the bulk of what our office would fund from the Let's Grow Steam, a lot of y'all are probably familiar with the Soapbox Derby program they do, but they also have a career, college career kind of day they do on, a big expo, where they bring in guidance counselors, college counselors, the whole nine yards, and we fund the bulk of that. That happens at Trade Center. Last year, I think we had somewhere close to 4,000 kids attend that were educated along the lines of what their next step might be. It brings in 11th and 12th graders. And that was, we felt that was more important. Not that the soapbox is not important, but she, the program had some donors from corporations, and so we steered the funding toward this. Let's see. Liberty Theater is, we're requesting $20,000 to Liberty Theater. Liberty Theater does an after-school program that deals with arts, education, mentoring, manners, leadership. There's a multitude of things going. I would encourage you to go by and watch this program in action. It has been tremendously helpful. Dr. Anderson's done a great job out there with this program, and it's been in the works for a while, and it's really building itself. Literacy Alliance for $30,000. The Literacy Alliance is a huge program, but we only deal with two aspects of it. Because of, you know, we don't have an unlimited amount of money, what we try to do is find the ones that we feel like can be most beneficial to our community. And so, we deal with the kindergarten readiness side of it and the adult literacy side. We felt like those two could have the biggest impact on the city of Columbus, and that's where that $30,000 would go. Next is Micah's Promise. Micah's Promise works hand-in-hand with many organizations. It is also a sex trafficking prevention-type program. Bobby has done amazing work with this. She also works with the Being Wellness program, and we're seeing more and more of the sex trafficking than we would like to see. Georgia is almost a hub for this. And I'm encouraged by the fact that we've had several organizations step forward and try to stem the tide on this. Neighborhoods Focus on African-American Youth for $35,000. The Neighborhoods Focus on African-American Youth occurs in Elizabeth Candy and Warren Williams. They have been there, I want to say 15 years. They treat roughly 50 to 60 kids on a daily basis as far as computer programming, after-school studying. Cheryl, Ms. Bush will bring in tutors that will specifically steer towards certain things. If they've got a child that needs significant help in math, she'll have somebody come in from the school system that'll work with them, a teacher or whatever. It's not just about that, though. It's also about bringing the families in with a snack time. The families have to participate as far as cleaning up or providing snacks or whatever the case is. So it's a very hands-on program, a community holistic-type programming.
All right, hold on just a second, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Thomas?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. I apologize. Continue.
Next is Officer Dispute Resolution for $20,000. The Officer Dispute Resolution is also known to most folks as a legitimation station, which helps, I think I've told you all this before, but in the state of Georgia, fathers who have not been paired with their children through the mother of the child have very little rights. So what this does is it legitimizes that and allows those children to have a father in their life. These are, these are men who want to, who want to establish that relationship, and so that is where the legitimation station comes into effect. Next is the Open Door Community House.
Excuse me, Seth, I'm sorry. Counselor Woodson?
Seth, I'm sorry. The 21 that you have here is different than the 21 you have there.
I know. And I didn't know that until I was talking to Bruce, and I said, hey, something's not right here. So the list he has is different from mine. Actually, two were left off of my list.
Okay.
Legitimation Station and Chattahoochee Valley Jail Ministry.
Okay. Just wanted to...
So the resolutions are there somewhere floating through the air. I think it's this immunity code thing that I just want to shoot myself over right now. That has been a real fun program to work with, if you haven't worked with it already.
Oh, I understand.
And poor Sandra. Sandra and I, I think we should have just gone to dinner this weekend. We spent a lot of time talking back and forth, so she's a jewel.
Well, that sounds like you need to take her to dinner.
I would gladly, because if it wasn't for her...
You probably said it, so you might as well.
I was about this close to hearing my resignation to the mayor. Mayor, I just can't do it anymore. When Sandra gets on the phone, we got this, Seth. So thanks to Sandra.
So Sandra, you got a lunch date or a dinner date? Okay, thank you.
The next one, Open Door. The Open Door program, if, again, another one if you haven't seen, they do amazing things out there. Kim is working with kids, all of her kids are on the 10% line or the $10,000 line, their below, that's their family income is $10,000. And I can't even imagine that. These kids are in a significant disadvantage to the rest of the children. Last year, Open Door, or this year, worked with 243 kids. Of those 243, 242 fell below $10,000 a year in family income. They recently did a five-year study on the academic performance, and students in that program have a higher academic rate of basically excelling as opposed to others. So they're making up ground after they've gone backwards, basically. They've also found out that putting music into the program has also accelerated that aspect, too. So a lot of what we were saying eight years ago from the programs that we were trying to fund, or you were funding, has come to fruition. We're finding that these music programs and these arts programs are having a significant impact on the learning aspect of these children. And that one, that program is for $20,000. Next is Overflow. The Overflow program is, there's different aspects to the Overflow program. The biggest being that most people know about is the barber program, where they bring these kids in, they educate them on the, on being a barber or stylist. And they also have what they call a sweeper's program, where these kids come in and they have to sweep while they're there. They have to clean the barber shop, and they're paid a little stipend out of that. But the biggest thing is the community aspect of it. The kids have to do homework while they're there. They have to be mentored by somebody. And these kids will come back years later and still just hang out in this barber shop with Gerald and his wife, Katasha. They have become a significant component to turning the tide in an area that was blighted and had a significant downturn with children. So I really can't say enough about them. They're wonderful people that were doing this on their own for a long time out of their own pocket. Let's see, Prodigy Project for $20,000. The Prodigy Project is a new one this year. It is a mentoring, tutoring-based program where they get referrals from DJJ or Department of Juvenile Justice and the Scotty County School System. The mentoring involves teachers and retired teachers. It'll also involve community leaders that will come in and work with the children on how to basically steer away from that life. If you'll notice, there's a common theme here. Most of what we do is to try to keep the children off the street and in the classroom, and that's been significant. The numbers can be small at times with some of the programs, but we're trying to save all that we can. That's what the Prodigy Project does. It also works with law enforcement. Next is Right From the Start for $20,000. The Right From the Start program, last year was the first year we funded it under this, the Family Matters portion of it. It's like a family wellness program that we had talked about for a long time, that, look, we're doing all these things for the kids, now how are we going to impact the families? Because we know that the parents are a big component of this. So this program comes in, it works out of South Columbus United Methodist Church, I think, Ervin Williams is here somewhere in the back. It also works in Fourth Street, and it also works in Church of the Highlands. and it also works in Church of the Highlands, or the Highlands Church, I forgot how it's called. But anyway, it works in all those communities, and it has a parenting program inside the church and brings those kids and those families in. If you could see some of the testimonials from some of the moms that have said, I had no idea how to deal with him or her. I didn't know, nobody taught me how to parent, and I didn't know how to discipline, I didn't know how to educate, any of these things. And this has been a dream of ours. We just didn't have anybody to do it. We didn't have an organization that really knew how to help with the parenting aspect, and Pastoral Institute was the first group to get involved, and then Right From the Start took it over from that point. Next is St. Benedict. The St. Benedict program, some, I think there were some counselors there with us when we went to this. There was a church that invited some of us there to basically hear their issues. I think you were there, Counselor Huff, okay. And so we met with the church. They were telling us all these things that they wanted to make happen and how bad things were in their area, but they wanted to make a difference, and everybody immediately looked at me. And so I met with the church after the fact, and I said, look, you're exactly what we're looking for. We want the communities to stand up and move forward. And so under this program, what they'll do is they'll do, have a tutoring program that's an hour and a half at a time inside the church. There's also a choral program, and there's also a community outreach development kind of program. The beauty of this is, is the tutoring program is retired teachers and students that are in the Education Department at CSU, and the choral program is also part of CSU. So you're not just getting people volunteering and saying, well, I think I can help somebody learn how to read better. You're getting retired teachers and future teachers to run this program. So anyway, that was for twenty thousand dollars. The next one is St. Thomas Episcopal Church. This is probably one of my favorite. We went into Boxwood years ago, at least it feels like years ago, to reopen Boxwood. We didn't know what that would mean. We just knew that it had to be done, and that could help springboard maybe other things. Well, St. Thomas went in there and started a soccer program. We never funded it. We never paid a dime for it. They did it on their own. They continued to do it for years. I think that Counselor Barnes was in first communication with them. He called me, said, I think we need to sit down and talk with them. So as we got to talking, we said, look, this could be, this could be huge. And what I didn't know was, it was already huge. They were not only doing a soccer program, they were doing a community garden program. They were doing, they would go to these houses and knock on the doors, the families would, to find out why the kid wasn't at soccer practice, and then they would find the kid needed other stuff, clothing or school supplies or food or whatever. And so it became this massive machine almost that the church and others were supporting. So we're requesting twenty thousand dollars to help this program continue, but like I said, they've been in existence for five years on their own doing this, and it's tremendous. The next program is a Sexual Support Center for ten thousand. This program mainly deals with teen victimization, works with teenagers to help them be less of a target or less of a victim as far as teen violence, sex trafficking, those kind of things. The, again, you'll see one of the trends here, but that's because we're seeing more and more of it. We're seeing more sex trafficking. We're seeing more family violence issues. We're seeing more victimization. And if you'll notice, a large percentage of the murders that occur in Columbus, Georgia are family violence acts. And so we're trying to make that less of a trend by educating children and women, because they're usually the ones that this impacts the most, and so we're trying to put them into a better situation. The next one is SARN, or Southern Anti-Racism Network, which is the SPICE program. The SPICE program would operate out of the library. It would be, they would have tablets, the kids would. They'd go through tutoring. They would learn how to use the tablets. After they finished their program, they would own these tablets if they complete so many classes. The significance of this is, is we're dealing with extremely at-risk students in some of the lowest-performing schools, and these families are significantly affected by poverty, so they don't have computers in their households or tablets or smartphones and things like that. So this could be a game changer for those children, and so we're hoping that this will make that impact that we see children like mine who take for granted the fact that they have these devices, that they can research and do homework, apps and things like that with. Next is Springer Opera House for thirty-five thousand dollars under the Pear Program. Again, the Pear Program is one of those programs that we have just seen blow it out of the water. We've seen academic performance go up. We've seen violence in the classroom go down. We've seen disruptions go down. Last year, they treated twenty-five-hundred students. They saw writing ability on average go up by twenty-five percent. Some schools went up forty-six percent. They're seeing aptitude scores go up. There's on and on and on. Again, we're seeing the arts programs that have become significant in the lives of these children to make things different. Next is Teen Advisors, the Elevate Program. Elevate and actually, help me, Derek.
Velocity.
Velocity, geez. The Velocity Program. The reason we operated on those two specifically was because they dealt with middle school and ninth graders going into high school. Those are the two at-risk categories that were most at risk. We felt like the high schools at that point would have less of a chance to work with them, and we knew that these were open grounds for kids that could be victimized or at risk for violent behavior or disruptive behavior. So the Velocity and Elevate Program kind of get in front of those kids with mentors from higher grade levels to try to teach them the way, the right way, do things right. All right, next is Works Program for thirty-five thousand. Works is actually Second Chance Works, which is ran by, most of y'all know him as Coach Flowers. I still call him Coach, and it deals with the kids that, well, they're pretty rough, that a lot of people have given up on, and it gets them through the process of graduating and not going down the road they need to. Coach works with a lot of mentors, former professional athletes, current church leaders. I mean, you can go down the list of them. There's several of them sitting back in the back, back there, and they're trying to help these young men especially not take that path that's so easy for them at that point, because they feel like they've been given up on. So Coach Flowers becomes almost a father figure to these guys, as well as his mentors that work with him. Next one is, oh, is, again, see, it's switched. Young Life. Young Life for twenty thousand dollars. The Young Life Program occurs out of Carver High School. It is a teen pregnancy program as well as a graduation program. They, they've had some other things happen inside Carver to lead them in this direction from some friends and stuff. So what they did was they target kids that they know may not have a chance of graduating to increase that level of graduation, and they also work with either current pregnancies or young girls who have given birth to children. And the uniqueness of this is, these girls now have a mentor that has their number. They've met them at coffee shops, their own house, wherever they can to help encourage these girls. So that's the gist of the program in a whole. Young Life, oh, I did Young Life, YMCA. YMCA for twenty thousand dollars is another education mentoring program that occurs at the MLK YMCA. It is also a tutoring program. It is an activity program. They put mentors in these kids' lives, and what you're seeing is, we basically tell all these programs, okay, there's a couple of things you've got to have in here in order for us to even, for the board to even look at you. One is, there's got to be some mentoring aspects. You can't just tutor these kids and expect that to be the only thing that's going to work for them. We need their parents involved to some extent, which the Y does. We also need them to know how to have conflict resolution, which also this program does, which they all do. And so we're hoping that this program will continue to grow at the rate they are. I know that we're in works with the Y to even develop some other programs, because they've got the umbrella to deal with a lot of these things. So anyway, that's the YMCA, and I think that's it. Yes.
That's it? All right, well, great. Well, listen, yeah, take a breath.
Try to get through it fast, Mayor.
You did a good job. I tell you, let's pull SARN and Literacy Alliance, and do I have a motion to approve all of the others?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on any of those? All right, if you, can you cue that, Bruce, or do we need to take a voice vote? We'll take a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. And now we'll, I'll entertain a motion for SARN.
Motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and now I'll entertain one for Literacy Alliance. I think Counselor Barnes, motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seth, outstanding job.
Thank you, sir.
Do you want to introduce some of your board members?
Yes, sir. I think I've only got two here. My chairperson, Loray Moore, oh, I'm sorry. And Joseph LaBranch is in the back. Loray, do you want to say anything?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. On behalf of the Board of the Crime Prevention Grant, I just want to say congratulations to each of the organizations that applied and recognize the outstanding work that they are doing in the community towards preventing crime, reducing crime, and recidivism. So we thank you as a board for the opportunity to recommend each and every organization for crime prevention grants. Thank you.
Well, and the community thanks the board, because this is not easy work, but it's noble work. There are, they get hundreds of applications, and they don't just discard them. They try to mentor the people that turn in applications, let them know where they missed an opportunity. But, you know, we've seen in the news just the last few, just this last week, young people taking other young people's lives. Now, we're going to arrest them. We catch them. Our police are outstanding. They do an amazing job. But that puts our law enforcement in danger, and it fills our jails, and it wipes out more than one life, the one that was taken, and the one that now spends the rest of theirs in jail. These programs are one of the only things that we can hang on to, to try to get in touch with these youngsters early enough to provide some structure and cut down on the number that turn to negative activities as they grow. So a lot of these things won't bear fruit for maybe seven, eight, ten years, but it is critical that we continue to try to identify ways to wrap our arms as a community around some of these young people and let them know that they are cared about, and there are other things that they can get engaged in besides drugs, gangs, and violence. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Barnes?
You know, Mr. Mayor, this is one of my favorite council meetings, because, you know, I always, I mentioned a while back, when we first started this, my wife and I, our last duty station was Fort Lewis, Washington. I love Fort Lewis, Washington, love the people there. But you know what brought the Barnes family back here? Were the people here. Columbus is so folksy, people that really care for each other and really get involved. And, you know, when this council decided to put the money where their mouth was into support, there are many organizations out there in the community who were, who were working for many years, unassisted, without funding from the city. And we all know that, you know, unfortunately, in this age, you, without money, you can't really do what you want to do. And so when this council, mayor and council, stood up to the plate to fund these various organizations so that they can do the types of good, Mr. Mayor, when you said to wrap our arms around these young folks, to let them, no, that's what a lot of these organizations are doing, and they're all on a mission. And Loray, I would like to thank you, and please convey my personal thanks to the board for helping these communities be enabled. And Seth, let me tell you something. You are one of the hardest individuals. I hear from people in the community, you're going to places late at night, you're checking out a lot of the organizations, you're really doing, and everyone can see just from the presentation that you gave, that you were intimately involved, and you really know that all of these organizations are. So I'd like to thank you.
Thank you.
For meeting you, as you very well know, two of the organizations have instrumental in the Barnes household, and I'm deeply appreciative as a grandfather and great-grandfather to have organizations that, like the Boxwood Rec Center and the Literacy Alliance and the Bridge Program, and all the programs really that you mentioned of the good, hard-working people that just want to do as Jesus taught us to do. And so I just want to thank you again, because I know you work awfully hard, and just to thank this mayor and council again for contributing to help these organizations the way they have.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that our audience is aware of some of the things that goes on with the crime prevention grants and the board. We're not just handing out this money. Mr. Brown goes to these locations regularly. I think most of them at least once a quarter to make sure that they are doing what they have said they're going to do with our money, with the taxpayer money. We not only do that, but we require an audit. We require that they show us where they are spending this money. This money is not just given to any person or group. In fact, you have to be an organized organization, association, 501(c)(3) organization. When we give money to places like the Springer and the YMCA and St. Thomas Church, that money can't be used for anything except this program. And Mr. Brown is pretty relentless to make sure that that's all it's spent for. So if any of you out there are new to this program and you're thinking about maybe, mm-hmm, don't do that. Mr. Brown will be there to remind you that the purpose of these grants is to prevent crime in our community. And study after study after study shows that if you get the individual, when they are young enough, if they are vulnerable, and you give them something to do that is worthwhile, it will prevent crime. And so I want to say to Mr. Brown again, as Counselor Barnes said, he's a hard worker. He keeps up with all of these, and to Ms. Moore and the board, how much we appreciate you're looking at these, and we don't fund the entire program.
No.
The, for example, the Teen Advisors Elevate Program, they have to have their money in the game also. We don't provide any of them a hundred percent. And I am tickled to death to have been a part of this program since its very beginning, and I appreciate what you guys are doing, and I appreciate what we have seen in our community as a result of the crime prevention program. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like, Counselor Thomas said it much better than I could, but I would like for you to add one more piece to that, is talk about how the funds are distributed to the organizations throughout the year.
They, well, Counselor Allen, that's a great question. We cut checks monthly. They don't, there's not a lump sum done. There's no, you know, we have done a quarterly check before, but it's rare, and the monthly check is because we're very careful. And it's not because we don't trust the programs. It's just things can happen, and we try to offset any issues before they get too far. Luckily, we've never had that problem, but I did, I did have a, someone called me one time and say, hey, I've heard that such and such is being done with the funding, and I immediately called Finance. Actually, Deputy City Manager Hodge was in there at the time, and I said, stop the check. The check's supposed to go out in a couple of days, I think. I said, I know I've turned all the paperwork in, but stop this check. I got to figure out what's going on. And I went down and I looked at their numbers and their books, and it was rumored. And so we resolved that, but the luxury of the monthly check is, is that we can cut off funding at any moment to, I guess you could say alleviate the bleeding, if there is any.
There's a balancing check there.
Oh, yes, sir, yeah.
That's what I wanted the public to hear.
Yeah, and my board members are awesome about, actually, I do go to the programs, but my board members do, too. I've got some really, really good board members that sometimes will go with me, or they'll just go by themselves. So I'm very fortunate. And with that being said, Mayor, if I could, my board is amazing. They have been looking at... said, Mayor, if I could, I, my Board is amazing. They have been looking at applications since March. At times, they meet every week or every other week with me to discuss the programming, how they feel about it, if they want me to go ask more questions. We've brought programs in to actually have the questions asked directly to them. So, they don't get paid anything, but they work super, super hard. So, I'm very fortunate to work with the group that I do.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you for your Board, and thank you for your leadership of the Board as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, a couple of other things we've got to cover. We have a, the Transportation Investment Act requires that we have two individuals, one of which is the mayor.
You're supposed to stay here with us. We gave you money.
We'll hang in there just a second, let folks.
We should require they have to stay here. We gave you the money.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's, we've got a few more things to do. Not nearly as fun as giving away money, but we'll try to motor on. The one thing I was saying is, is we have to have two representatives. The mayor is always one, and we need to get one other member of council to serve, according to the Transportation Investment Act, on the Tisfrost Roundtable, which will have its first meeting, actually, next week. So, I, Counselor Allen?
Mayor, I would like to nominate Counselor Judy Thomas to sit in that position for the City of Columbus.
Okay. All right, there's a motion and a second. Are there any other nominees? Are there any questions? You do not get to dissent? In that case, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, good. Well, Counselor Thomas will serve as the other representative. Thank you, ma'am. We, and I did, we did skip over the minutes, we didn't have a quorum when we got to them, so I'll entertain a motion. Motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion, or anything you'd like to edit? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good deal. All right, and I think, I think we finally got through my, no, we don't, we finally got through my agenda, so we'll move on to the city attorney. Try, hit your button again.
Mayor, we thank you. We have had a request to move up one item concerning Medical Center Hospital Authority tax-exempt financing before we have our zoning matters, if that's okay with the council.
Motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any discussion?
Well, we'll, let's, they've got folks here, in case they don't want to say anything, or anybody has questions, but this is for the purpose of financing or refinancing, not to exceed $350 million in tax-exempt bonds by the Medical Center Hospital Authority on behalf of Piedmont Healthcare. And Attorney Andrew Rothschild is here with Mr. Alan Holliday.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Just tell them briefly why we're doing this, so they can be tax-exempt.
So, there is a federal law called TEFFRA that Clifton and Ms. Schefter probably know more about than I do. But, in order for tax-exempt bonds, for bonds to be tax-exempt under this TEFFRA law, we have to get your approval, or the mayor's approval. And it turns out that the way that y'all want to do it is to have city council and the mayor approve this. The bonds can be tax-exempt because they are being used to finance, or I guess the construction, or acquisition, or improvement of healthcare facilities. Otherwise, that wouldn't be possible. But, it's my understanding that TEFFRA approval is routinely granted, and this is a step that we have to take in order for that to take place. Mr. Holliday, might want to-
Yes, I'd just speak to the business purpose. I'm the Chief Financial Officer at Piedmont Columbus Regional. And this is part of the promise that Piedmont made to Columbus Regional when we merged, was that they would refinance our debt. So, this is just part of what was contemplated two years ago when that merger took place. It's just taken a while to get this to happen. So, basically, it's the debt we have currently, they're just going to refinance it, and their bond rating is better than ours, so we'll get better interest. That's what this is all about.
Good deal. Are there any questions? We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Oh, you can enter your votes, sorry. All right, that passes. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for being here. The, go back to top of our agenda, Mayor will take some demolition votes and some zoning items. The first one, the demolition ordinance, we'd like to request, Deputy City Manager says that number 10, we'd ask that that be removed. The owner, Mr. Braswell, has taken out a permit, is that correct, to
His daughter is here this evening, and has indicated that she will come in and take out a permit tomorrow. We will have another list of demolitions that come back in October. So, if that does not occur, we will add that back to the list in October.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Well, do you have a comment? Mr. City Manager?
Um, October, I was just thinking, Mayor, if you would take the vote and authorize my office to remove it if she, if she comes in and gets the permit. If she does not, then it would remain on the list.
It's up to council, but that makes, that makes sense. I mean, and ma'am, you understand, we just want to make sure that if something were to happen, and your situation were to change, the House would not linger in that condition for the neighbors to deal with.
Permit will be got tomorrow.
Okay, Counselor Thomas?
And Mr. City Manager, once they get, she gets the permit, is there a time limit on how long she has to have that completed, that demolition completed?
The permit is good for 180 days.
So, within 180 days, she has to have the demolition done, and if not, then it can go back on the list, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, I get, and I guess we could put a shorter time limit on it, because this is to grant another 180 days, when this house has been in this condition for a very, very long time, and-
It'll be demo way before that.
I don't have any doubt that that's going to happen, but I just want to make sure that if it, if something happens, and it doesn't happen, that we have a recourse to get it back where it should be.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I would make a substitute motion to do, as the City Manager has requested.
One second.
Okay, well, we've got other-
That it stay on the list with authorization to the City Manager to remove it from the list if there is a permit pull within a week?
She says she's coming tomorrow.
She says tomorrow. Do we need to give her to the end of, until Friday? I don't know. Whatever you think. Until Friday?
Haven't we had others where they stay on the list, and then we just get it, and you get, you get permit when you show the permit, and then they'll-
She has until 5:00 o'clock Friday.
Okay.
Okay. That's the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. To the motion, Counselor Allen?
So, we don't have to vote twice. Can I just change my motion to reflect the comments that Counselor Thomas and City Manager made, that we just let City Manager handle it administratively?
I think that's, that's fine with me. Counselor Thomas? Okay. All right, Counselor Woodson?
Yeah.
I lost it, there you go.
Yes, sir. I just want to make sure, I thought in the past, that's what we've done. If someone came in petition, we still, we didn't take a vote or anything, we just, we left it on there, and if they did what they were supposed to, we just took it off the list. Isn't that what we've done in the past? Okay. I just want to make sure we were being consistent, because it didn't seem like it at the moment. All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, there's a motion and a second to leave it on the list, but allow the City Manager to exercise an administrative action, remove it if there is a permit produced before 5:00 on Friday. All right, any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ma'am, you've got to the end of the week?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, with that amendment, we're ready to vote on the entire ordinance then.
Oh, that's right, yeah, we do get to do that. Is there a motion to approve the demolition ordinance?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, would you cue it? Please enter your votes. That's approved.
All right, thank you. Next item is a no parking zone along North and South Curbs of Dixie Street to Chicago that is ready for adoption.
Motion second to approve. Any further discussion? Please cue it. Counselors, please enter your votes. That passes.
All right, next item was the Fire Medic Budget Amendment. It is ready for adoption.
Motion and a second to approve item three. Any discussion? Please cue it. You can enter your votes, please. That passes.
That passed. Okay. And Mayor, we've got two zoning public hearings. We will call up first, applicant Rob McKenna on behalf of Mr. John Wells. This is a petition at 4590 Woodruff Road, currently zoned SFR 3, proposed zoning neighborhood commercial for commercial retail. Planning Advisory Commission recommended denial, and Planning Department recommends approval based on compatibility with existing land use.
Counselor Garrett, I think, has an amendment that he wants to offer up prior to the discussion.
I've got quite a few amendments to offer. And just so my fellow counselors know, I know, called me, have you, and told you I was opposing this rezoning, but after talking with my constituents, explaining the current uses, many more folks came on board with a rezoning with conditions. And just so you all know, before I read the amendments, under the current uses, currently, the property owner has about $60,000 in the property, it's directly across from commercial. I've talked to Counselor Crabbe, other realtors, they don't feel like they could make, there would be any money to be made with single-family residential sales. So, the most compatible use would most likely be rentals. I've also talked to builders regarding what they could build, price per square foot, there are some variations, but basically, it doesn't look financially feasible for them to do single-family sales. My concern is, this backs up to neighbors' properties, and what they could do there, where they can make money, and this is not to be any indication that the property owner has said he would do this, but obviously, he's going to not lose money on this. So, he could sell it to an outside developer. But, right now, they could put four personal care, foster care homes, they could put short-term rentals, a club or lodge, or a daycare center. Traffic's been one of the main concerns, so that's something I've been very cognizant of. And through long negotiations, I've gotten the property owner to agree to quite a few conditions. And I'm not going to say necessarily they were agreeable to them at first, because it reduces their property value, but they have come to a compromise based on things the neighbors have told me they wanted. But, this would be my amendment. And I have emailed the City Manager, so he has all this already written down. The main one, the neighbors around there wanted evergreen trees, buffer, all the way around, at least six foot tall. This doesn't need to be in the actual amendment, but they have indicated it would be cypress trees, so there would be full cover. Then, the following uses would be excluded. No bar, liquor store, cemetery, theater, school, daycare facility, amusement park, I know that's unlikely for this small lot, but just want to put that in there, convenience store, lottery or gaming devices, health and fitness facilities, coin laundry, auto truck repair, tire sales, wash and detail, banquet facility, major utility or wireless communication facility. Additionally, there were concerns about restaurants going in there, so the hours they've agreed to, to be limited to 6:30 a.m., and that's because they might want to have some sort of small coffee shop, even though there's Starbucks, maybe something local, until 10:00 p.m. They've agreed that the dumpster will only unload during those operating hours, because I understand St. Francis Shopping Center, many times the dumpster is unloaded at 2:00 a.m., wakes residents up. So, that would be a violation of the conditions. Furthermore, because of the concerns with rodents, or with food smells, they have agreed to have the dumpster emptied by Advance, which is the, would be the contractor, at least three days per week. And I've already talked to them, and I think they would be amenable, if there was some sort of issue with a smell, to increasing that, but three days a week has been more than is typical, and should alleviate any types of problems. Most of these facilities, as you understand, convenience stores, coin lottery, that type of thing, those are repeat customers, where people might come in quickly, because a lot of the neighbors had traffic concerns. There are some that are completely opposed to this rezoning. There are some who want the rezoning without it, and there are some who are okay with the rezoning without conditions. But, I tried to find a nice balance. I read this, because I wanted the neighbors to know what conditions were already on the table before they came forward and started asking for different things. But, we can't make everybody happy compromises where, basically, neither side is fully, fully happy, but we come to something that everybody can agree to. So, that's what I've tried to do here. I think this will minimize traffic concerns. I think it will minimize folks, that they wouldn't necessarily want in their neighborhood, businesses that might attract crime, like the lottery, that type of thing. And they're already, you know, there's already a gas station backing up this property, there are rental properties on the other side, and then directly across the street, there's large commercial with the St. Francis Shopping Center. So, I've tried to include conditions that would protect the neighborhood as best as possible. So, I'll make that amendment, if I can get a second.
Motion and a second. To the motion, Counselor Thomas?
Yes, I want to ask you, Counselor Garrett, you said health, what was that one?
Health and fitness was at 12:00.
That's, that's, does not exclude, like, a doctor's office, or a lab, or something like that?
They would prefer doctor's offices, and interim sales, that kind of thing.
Okay. I just want to make, make clear that that's what that means.
Sure. Just nothing that would have a, like a plant fitness, where people are coming in for 30 minutes and leaving, and we have a lot of traffic. We want to minimize any traffic impact.
Okay. Well, there is a motion and a second to add those restrictions and amendments to the existing ordinance request. Any other discussion? All right, then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those conditions are added.
Okay. Any other discussion? We will have those listed, of course, as conditions in two weeks when it comes back for a vote.
We still have to hear from the public, I think.
Mr. McKenna, come on up.
Counselor Thomas?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Jones. The PAC said, denied it, and, but your department is saying, approve it. Could you speak to that, Forrest, please?
Counselor Thomas, I can only, I can't fully describe to you what PAC's, what's in PAC's mind. I think they heard from the neighbors that day, and decided that they would, it felt like it was more conducive to go that way. We looked at it from the standpoint, though, of what the highest and best use of that property could be. As Counselor Garrett already alluded to, there's limited in terms of the actual uses that can go on that property. We didn't see single-family going back on, in that site, because of the activity that surrounds it now, with commercial basically on at least two sides of that property, or directly across the street. So, we felt like the request was a reasonable request, and that one we could support. And basically, again, like we say, conforming to the actual land use issues around that, around that site, so.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rob McKenna, and I'm an attorney at Page, Grant, Sprouts, Tucker and Ford. I represent John Wells in connection with this rezoning. We are seeking to get this property rezoned from SFR 3 to NC. We did speak many times with Counselor Garrett, and I've talked- and I've talked to some of you as well. We do agree with the conditions that were read off by Councilor Garrett. So hopefully, that's, the whole idea is to try to limit the impact on the neighborhood. So this property used to be the neighborhood pool for Winchester subdivision. It fell into disrepair and non-use for many years, went into tax sale. John bought it at a tax sale. He has since gone in and taken the pool out, filled it in, removed all the debris, graded it off, and it looks like a nice lot now. But it wasn't when he got it. So that's where the, the money's come in, with all the expenses he's had in repairing everything, getting it ready. Looking at the property, you know, SFR I or SFR III, you're not going to be able to sell a house on that lot. You know, we've talked to many realtors, many builders, as Council Garrett said. You're just not going to be able to get your, not, not just make money, but you're not going to be able to get your money back off of a house on that lot. We looked at other possible opportunities with this property. As Council Garrett suggested, we looked at some of the, the other alternatives within the SFR III. We felt like those would be more impactful on the neighborhood, just because we'd have, you know, people living here the whole time, coming in and out. Traffic there is not real, you know, for, for residents is not good. For a commercial property, though, it makes sense. I mean, that's what's across the street. That's what the road, you know, will support. So we went to NC, which would be a much smaller development, much less impact on the neighborhood. This property is currently sitting about six to eight feet below the level of the, of the houses behind it. All of those houses currently have a fence on it. There's a pretty steep drop-off behind our, behind the fence going onto our lot. So our development will be below, really, mostly their sightline. And if we do the, the cypress or evergreen trees along the back, that will block out pretty much all of the view of that building at all. So we feel like that's the, the best use for that property. I think city planning agreed with us. PAC obviously did not, but there's no telling what they were thinking on that one, so. But I'll be happy to take any questions anybody has.
Doesn't appear to be any.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Mr. McKenna, now, any neighbors, come on up. Ms. Wiggins, give them your name and address when you get up there, please.
My name is Rebecca Wiggins, and I live at 4616 St. Francis Avenue. I oppose this rezoning. I desire to continue to protect the integrity of the neighborhood for the following reasons. We don't need or want further commercial encroachment into our neighborhood. Once the property is rezoned, it will not go back residential. Rezoning will contribute to the already congested traffic at Manchester Expressway and Woodruff Road. School buses from Arnold Mills School and Allen Elementary School routinely travel this road. Rezoning will lower the property values of residents directly behind this property. Rezoning will open opportunity for businesses ill-suited for the neighborhood, such as any sort of eatery, which requires dumpsters for the disposing of rotten food. These dumpsters, dumpsters will smell bad and attract rats. If this property is rezoned, it will make it easier to rezone adjacent properties to neighborhood commercial. Ingress and egress from the gas station and the existing St. Francis Shopping Center is already problematic. Adding traffic into yet another shopping strip will further inhibit traffic flow from Manchester Expressway into the neighborhood. According to the Planning Department, single-family residential produces 68 trips per day. Neighborhood commercial will produce 598 trips per day. 68 trips per day versus 598 trips per day. I did the math. That's a difference of 530 trips per day. St. Francis Shopping Center and the office building behind it are zoned neighbor commercial, and now suffer vacancies. There is no compelling need for yet another retail commercial strip center. For your further consideration, PAC voted to deny recommendation to rezon, citing the inconsistency with the comprehensive master plan and the desires of the neighborhood. Our neighborhood has had several meetings regarding this proposed rezoning. Most, but not all, were opposed to the rezoning. Some felt that if this is denied by council, Mr. Wells will then seek a multifamily rezoning, which is very much opposed. This fear has some believing that neighborhood commercial would be the lesser of these two evils. With all respect to John Wells, he knew what the property was owned when he bought it. It is neither council's, nor the city, nor our neighborhood's responsibility to ensure that Mr. Wells has a profitable entity there. If council supports an investor over the needs and desires of the neighborhood, then government is no longer serving the people. However, if council insists on rezoning this property, we would like very restrictive conditions. We prefer a very passive office building with businesses that close early in the evening, no eateries of any kind. Eateries are not required to have dedicated dumpsters. Therefore, rotten food can go into a dumpster and contaminate everything else in there. We ask that if you approve this, that the dumpsters would be emptied once a day, and preferably not at 3:00 in the morning. We want no bars or lounges, no liquor store, and all the other things that Councilor Garrett, Garrett said. We would like a 30-foot natural buffer on three sides with twice the required plantings. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggins. Any questions?
All right. Anybody else want to come up and be heard? Okay. Don't see any other hands, Mayor.
Okay.
We will bring that back as amended with, with the conditions that council has added tonight in two weeks for a vote. Okay?
Okay.
Thank y'all for being here. The next zoning item, Mayor, is a parcel at 2443, 2705, and 2713 Norris Road. So J.C. Homes and Development petition proposed use as multifamily residential office. So RO is proposed. The Planning Advisory Commission had a recommendation of denial, and Planning Department has recommended conditional approval. Mr. Jones, you want to come down? Look at that twice.
What, what questions can I answer for you now, on this one? We have, we have basically done the same thing in terms of making our recommendation back to you on that.
Mr. Jones, Councilor Crabbe, I believe, has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain what the conditional approval is? What are the conditions?
I thought I had it here in front of me.
Is it the 60-foot buffer?
I'm looking for it.
And the limitation on the number of units?
That's what I'm showing.
60-foot undisturbed natural buffer? Yeah. 48 units. Yeah. I don't, I'm, I'm working off memory here, but it appears a 60-foot undisturbed natural buffer around the property.
Did you say 50?
60. 60.
60 feet.
Yeah, what I'm showing is a 60-foot undisturbed buffer shall be maintained along the western property line, and number two, no more than 48 units shall be permitted.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it. That's it.
What, Rick?
48.
Can you tell me what the, what the regular buffer would be without the conditions?
It's going, it's going to really depend on the, the adjoining properties, but normally, somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to 15 feet is what we look at for the buffer itself.
Okay.
So this is a considerably wider buffer, if it is approved.
Okay.
Is that all, Councilor Crabbe?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Cliff, hit your light again. You got it.
Go ahead.
Hey, good evening. My name is Cam Cameron. My address is 7512 Morning Marsh Trail, Penn Amos City Beach, Florida. Hey, I appreciate you hearing my request tonight. I, I'll keep it short and, and save my time for questions. But as many of you are aware, the, there's, there's been a transition along this section of Norris Road for a while now, from, from single-family detached to more of a multifamily product. I'm asking for a RO, to, a change to the RO zoning designation, in order to build a couple of apartment buildings. Right now, there's several, several other properties within the vicinity that are, that are multifamily, including my southernmost neighbor, Hidden Lakes, which is the same zoning I'm seeking, which is RO. Council staff has recommended approval, and as Mr. Jones stated with the buffer, you know, we're trying to go above and beyond for the neighbors. And as he stated, it was 10 or 15, but we're, we're willing to do 60. If we can get more, we'll do more. But, you know, but we'll call it at least a minimum of 60 feet. I think, under that zoning, we could ask for 150 units. We're, we're fine with the, the condition of 48 units. And we're just looking to build a, a product that's, that the neighbors will be proud of. I know it's scary when, when people hear apartments are coming into their backyard, but we're, we're in it for the long haul. This will be a, a really nice product, you know, seeking rents from 900 to 1,200 a month is, is our projected range of what we'd be looking for. So, so it will, obviously, to meet those standards, we have to, we have, we have to keep it nice. So that's our intention. Hey, with that, I'll answer any questions or...
Mr. Cameron, I don't see any from the council.
All right. Thank you. Let's see if anybody else wants to be heard, Mayor. Come on up. Yeah, Mr. Dow, give them your name and address when you get up there, please.
My name is Robert Dow. I, I'm the owner of the house directly across the street from where the zoning wants to be changed, 2706 Norris Road. It's a nice little, just a very small cottagey house, 800 square feet, with a huge lot, cornered lot, beautiful trees, 60, 80-year-old trees. The whole neighborhood is similar to my lot. It's single-family homes, rather old, you know, like my home was built in 1940. And I hate to disagree with that gentleman, but I have not seen any, any construction of multifamily homes ever in that area. Okay? So I just wanted to make that very clear. And I appreciate the growth, the beauty of the neighborhood. The average save, sales price of the, the homes there is $75,000 to $180,000. I don't think any multifamily apartments would really contribute to the value of that neighborhood, or the, the looks, the greenery, the beauty of that neighborhood. I am violently, well, not violently, I am strongly opposed to any rezoning, other than maintaining the single family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dow.
All right, thanks, sir. Anybody else? Come on up. Got a couple more hands.
My name is Brad Perthurner. I live at 3300 Glenbrook Drive. What no one's addressed here is the grade of the property and the flooding we have down below. When heavy rains come, it always comes out in the sewers. And, and my dad always says stuff runs downhill, so I'm sure their plumbing is going to come downhill to the lines on Lindsey Creek. It's a grade like this from Norris Road up, and no one addressed how they're going to get rid of the water. Because I, I, I abut Hidden Lakes, and they have a drainage ditch they built, I guess, when they constructed the property, and they haven't cleaned in 25 years. And when it rains, it floods my backyard and all my neighbors' backyards. And that's going to be the same thing to all the people that have abutted this property. And the water has to go to that Lindsey Creek sewer, because that's the straightest thing downhill. And when, when we get heavy rains, it comes up through the sewers, sewer, manhole covers already. That's my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Okay, I see one more hand.
Can we get Donna to address that situation about the drainage?
Certainly. Ms. Newman, why don't you come and answer this specific question, sir? We'll get right back to you.
Sure.
Okay. If you'd let her have the mic for just one quick second.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
That's fine. Sorry. Yes, as part of the site development process, we will review the drainage on that particular lot, as well as how it might impact downstream properties as well. So we'll be reviewing drainage and site access.
Can, can you explain to me?
I'm sorry. It's really hard to hear both of you, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you explain to me why these issues are happening with the manholes? You know, I live over in Mahina Woods, and I do notice it on East Lindsey every once in a while, when it rains very hard, that the manhole covers on East Lindsey does flood. And so can you explain to me why, why that happens? It's just...
Well, it depends on if we're talking about sanitary sewer manholes or storm drainage manholes. There could be either one. And there's a lot of things that might contribute to that. One of them might be the timeframe in which it was designed. It might have been designed to a lesser storm event, as far as stormwater goes. Also, if, if you have a steep grade, because of the velocity of the water in the pipe, will create energy, and that also will make manholes and create flow to come out of the manholes, because of the, the energy of the water itself traveling down the pipes. So there's a lot of things that could be a reason for that. As far as sanitary sewer goes, again, it, the, the velocities and the age of the pipe, sometime, water comes from the ground into the pipes, which overloads the pipe and causes them to flood. So I'm not sure, when you say sewer, that can be sanitary or storm.
Are you saying toilet paper comes out of it?
So that would be...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
We...
That would be sanitary sewer, and that would be the Columbus Water Works. Would need to check into that, and we can report that.
Okay. I'll report that on 311.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Sir, if you would, I'm sorry. Thank you for your patience.
My name's Charlie Clipminder. I live at Hidden Lake Condominiums, which is right next to the property that we're talking about. And I had spoken to Mr. Holmes about a desire that they maintain green space and trees between the Hidden Lake Condominiums and this piece of property. And I've also spoken to the Planning Commission also on, on how I think would be, it's important that we maintain some sort of stand of trees in between Hidden Lake and the property. Unfortunately, I was not at the last meeting, so I can't say that I, I communicated it as well as I should have, all right? But anyways, on the conditions right now, the condition is set up, so there's, there's a 60-foot buffer on the back of the property, on the western side. But there's nothing right now on the southern side. And I would like to see a buffer, part of the conditions, if this gets approved, that the condition be that there be a tree line or a buffer, similar to the one in the back on the side between Hidden Lake Condominiums and this new property. Basically, that's it. So to have green space all the way around the property, and not just in one section in the back is what I'm saying.
Yes.
It's a natural, the actual area that we live in is very natural, and has a very foresty look to it. And it'd be nice, we could try to maintain that as much as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Please go to the mic, give your name and your address.
Good evening, council members. My name is James Shidell. I live at 2525 Norris Road in Hidden Lake, which is obviously located next to the property in discussion. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all today. I don't have a problem with the rezoning of this land, if it's done with the conditions outlined by the Planning Committee. What I am really... What I am really concerned about is we need to be very supportive of a limited number of safe and quality apartment units at this location. I am currently a branch manager with open mortgage, and my primary job is loan origination. One of the many programs we offer is the VA Home Loan. Over the last year or so, I've had relatives, business professionals, and more importantly, our soldiers complain about the shortage of available housing. Soldiers to Fort Benning have to stay in hotel rooms for as long as six months before securing proper housing for themselves and their family. My main concern is this: we must do everything we can throughout our entire community to ensure that we develop where feasible sufficient housing to deal with the shortage that we are currently experiencing before it gets any worse. The latest econo, the latest estimate from our Chamber of Commerce puts the economic impact from Fort Benning to our local community at $4.7 billion annually. That's billion. All of us throughout this great community need to support the development of sufficient housing, not only when it comes to Fort Benning, but other companies who are located here and those who may want to consider moving here. I appreciate your time and have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Scheidel.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Come on up, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Francesca Panto, and I live at 2806 Barbara Avenue. I'd like to start off by thanking you all for your time tonight and your service to our community. This is like my second council meeting, so this is a new process for me, so I appreciate you all. I believe you all received a letter that I emailed to you probably last week and probably from some of my neighbors. If it's allowed, I'd like to have the neighbors that are here tonight who are opposing this rezon to stand up, if that's okay. We have met on several occasions as a community and in a neighborhood regarding this rezoning. We're not opposed to development in this area, but we are vehemently opposed to an RO. We would like it to stay single-family residential, and as in my letter that I provided, the reasons as to why. The top four are increased traffic. There's just no way around it. The report that you all released via the Public Trello Board stated 319 trips would increase. I'm assuming that's with maybe the 48 units that were proposed, but if you're trying to get college students in there, that's two, three people per unit, that's three cars. So, I'm not sure if that was included. But also, no matter how you slice it, Norris Road is a two-lane road, and getting in and out of that apartment complex is going to be difficult with the regular traffic that leads to the highway and/or to Manchester and college. It's just can't, there's no way around it. The overall disturbance of the building of these units would be awful, especially because we abut the apartment complex that is in question. It would be a huge disturbance, and it would block traffic on Norris Road even for the actual building of it. It would invade our privacy. Apartment buildings are tall, and I understand there's going to be a buffer, but that includes noise pollution, the dumpsters, which weren't in the original plan that we saw at the last meeting, but I hope are included this time. And another thing is our property values. It's subjective, but most people don't want apartments looking down on their backyard, especially when they live in a single-family home with a family and children. We would like to see only single-family homes in this area. We understand that Mr. Cameron has an investment, but so do we. And we don't think one person's advance, investment should outweigh or override a whole neighborhood or communities. We also believe our concerns have not been addressed to our satisfaction, and we also have reason to believe that Mr. Cameron may get this rezoned and sell it. We know that he's trying to offload it, which I understand, but we do believe that single-family homes would be prosperous in this area. Midtown homes are going very quickly, and we're considered kind of on the outskirts of midtown, but very much part of the midtown community. We're very close to Richard Middle and Clubview Elementary, which would also make the traffic increase very dangerous, in our opinion. We respectfully ask that you deny this request to rezone, encourage him to consider building moderately priced, single-family homes, which our area needs and coincide with our community. There's only one RO, and it's down the street. Per your report, northeast, south, and west, there's only one RO designation, and it's to the south, the south. So, three-fourths of our area is a single-family home. And that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Doesn't appear to be any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Ann Bruner DeArmond, and I live in my mother's house, some of y'all may know her, Dot Bruner, who has lived at 2412 Norris Road, or next door, or next door. She's lived in three different houses for 69 years, before she passed away last year. I was born and raised on Norris Road, and even though it was never my intention to return there after mother's death and cleaning out the house, I got more and more comfortable. So, my house has been locked up for three years, and I've been staying at mother's. I understand how everybody feels. I was born and raised on Norris Road, and let me tell you something: I would give anything to go back to my youth. The land next to us, which is now Master Clean and Del Taco and so forth, Speedy Cash or whatever, was a beautiful home with a gorgeous swimming pool that was spring-fed, 40-foot poolhouse, maid's quarters, gorgeous dog run, about six acres of land. Across the street was Guy and Georgia Blackman. I grew up on their property riding horses. Their cattle ranch, where they let the horses in and out, was right in front of our front door.
Ma'am, if you would, speaking of the microphone, because they're picking it up for the folks at home.
Okay. So, it was absolutely wonderful place. Back then, we were on the streets all the time. We were on our bicycles. We were up and down. We knew all of our neighbors, very familiar with this property. We were always a little scared, because the driveway was long and the house was back in it. We were not quite brave enough. We knew who lived there, but to travel down that dirt driveway to figure out and see a little bit more of this property. The bottom line is, I've shed tears. The day they took Mary's house down, I stood at the window, I was in college, and I cried. It seemed like they wiped out my entire childhood. A few years later, they took Guy and Georgia. Hence, we have Hidden Lakes. I cried over Hidden Lakes. Lloyd Holly built condos. Somebody was saying they didn't know other, any other multifamily property. Come take a ride with me, I'll show you all of them. There's duplexes all up Fuller Street. There's Lloyds, apartment condominiums, 100 units over at Hidden Lakes. Mother's is a duplex. We have since opened it up, but it is a duplex and was a duplex for 65 years until her I've shed my tears, but I'm also a real estate agent, and I'm also a property manager. And back to the gentleman's about military, I'm well aware of that. I get every week three, four calls. They'd say, "I need to move. My family's been in the hotel for, you know, a week or more. How soon can you get me in a property?" And y'all were shown a picture of a complex that I currently manage at 4002 Armour Avenue. That is a, I've talked to the owner, and that is the projection that he's looking at. Yes, we are right next door to Columbus College, but we don't have, we have a few college students, but I'm like 30% military over there in that complex, and several, you know, and maybe 20% college students. And the rest are professional people. The rents are in the range that he talked about, and that's what I see. I have shed my tears over the development of the land. I mean, I remember when Cross Country Plaza was where they fed the cows for connect dairies. I don't know if anybody else in here can go back with me, but if you can, let me know. I'd love to find somebody to still talk about those good old days. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but the time has passed. You cannot build, a real estate agent will tell you, you cannot build single-family houses on that property. They will not sell. Why would somebody come into an aging neighborhood with 40, with 100 multifamily and buy a brand-new at today's market prices, single-family home? Why would you even think about doing that? So, that's, they won't sell. The highest and best use, as it breaks my heart to say it, is for the property for the complex. It is, and I think it will bring all the property values up in the area, not down. Because that acreage, if nobody bothered to tell you, a few, few years ago, was nothing more than a homeless encampment with hundreds and hundreds of homeless living in there until the police raided it. And we still have some that come back in there every now and then. That was what it was being used for. A nice apartment complex cannot hurt us in any shape, form, or fashion. And I'd be happy to talk to anybody about this later on, because I do have 70 years on the street.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Anybody else want to come up?
I know it's been a long evening for everybody. My name is Mickey Kay. My husband and I moved to 2722 Barbara Avenue to be closer to our family. We moved from beautiful North Carolina to a quaint little home in a very quiet neighborhood on Barbara Avenue. We have come to meet so many people that have lived there 30, 40, 50 years. It didn't stop us from moving there, and my grandkids love it there because it's quiet. It's beautiful. We have nature right back behind us. Our home would abut that development. A two-story apartment building overlooking my home and my grandkids is not appealing to me. I'm very concerned about the infrastructure, the runoff, the sewer, all of the problems that we've talked about already. Those are very, very serious concerns. Knowing that you have a sewer problem and it's not resolved is, is problematic for me. It has to be resolved before you move on to anything else. What we moved here for is serenity and family, and those two things are paramount to probably most of us. We love our families. We love our homes. I ask you, if you lived where we live, and I say, "Take a ride down Barbara Avenue and see how you would feel if there were a two-story apartment building overlooking your home." It's uncomfortable for me to even think about. I lived in Orlando, where it was developer heaven. I know what can be done, and I know how things can be ignored, and I know how things can be manipulated. And I just feel like if you would take a, a, a long look at the infrastructure problems that exist right now with the drainage, with the sewer, those conditions are unacceptable. And to allow more units to, to come into play in a situation that's not resolved is not tolerable. So, I'm just asking to be reasonable, take a look at, come drive down our street. I need you to know that since we started this campaign as neighbors, and I was the new neighbor that went around first to bring the brochures around, saying, "We have to go to the planning committee. We have to have our voices heard." The planning committee agreed with us, five to two. There was a reason. They heard us. But what I'm saying is, drive down Barbara Avenue, take a look. It's serene. It's beautiful. And yes, young families will want to build homes there, and I'll tell you why. It's a mile from everything. The library is right there. When our grandkids come by, they want to go to that library. They want to go to that park. They want to go down to Lake Bottom. It is fantastic for families, shopping, restaurants. Families will build there. They just have to be built in a reasonable way that they can afford it. And there's plenty of space there to build lovely homes in that green space. So, that is a real consideration that most of us have not even talked about. So, you know, if we can keep an open mind. And I just beg you to, to take a look and, and please hear what we're all saying. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else?
Just state your name and your address, please.
Hello. My name is Natasha Davis, and I just moved out there to the Barbara Avenue, 2800 Barbara Avenue. And I've been hearing a lot of stuff about the building. When I was a little girl going to Hardaway High School, I had always said that I wanted to live in that neighborhood. Guess what? I had that opportunity to move there, and it was the best thing. My son, he was able to graduate from high school, and he loved it. It was a, how can I say it? It was an experience that I could never, ever share until now. Building a apartment complex, it hurt my feelings, because I have been down that road so many times, and I could understand what the real estate, little estate lady was saying about change and everything. We're not saying, "Don't build." We're saying, "Really look at the options that need to be in place to make not only our community look good, but feel good." And if that is like something different, let's consider it. But don't sit up there and just say, "Okay, this is what we're going to build, a big old apartment complex," because I wouldn't want it. I would not want it. And it has been times where I have said, "I wish I could buy a little piece of that property to add on to what I have." Consider. Look at everything that, all the things, all the problems that is going to occur. And I hate to bring up the news that we just had, that a kid almost got abducted right there on Edgewood. We don't need to have that. We want it to be safe. We want it to be a family-oriented community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to be heard? Yes, sir. Come forward, please. Give your name and address. You're welcome.
Larry Jones of 2843 Tip Top Drive. I actually own three pieces of property adjacent to that property. Lived there 44 years when I first bought it. I've renovated it, repaired it, the house interior, exterior, landscaped it, constructed many walls. Basically, spent my fortune there. Made it my home for 44 years. Moved from Montgomery to Columbus, bought the property. My taxes now are five times what my monthly payments were at the time I bought it. So, the product, the value of my property has increased tremendously as far as the city's concerned. Have two questions first to ask the person requesting rezoning. The first one being, there was a mention about a 60-foot, 60-foot buffer zone, but I heard in there that it was a natural zone. Could that be explained, what exactly that means? And by the way, I am an architect. I've retired. I came here as an architect 50 years or so ago from Auburn, Montgomery. If they would address that first question, please.
Let me make sure I have your question. And just for, just for everybody to reference, I actually have the right file in my hand this time, so I can answer questions. What's your question again, sir? What's your question again, sir?
The question was, sixty-foot a buffer zone? It was identified as a natural buffer.
No, sir. It's identified as an undisturbed buffer along the western property line.
That's along Edgewood, right?
Yes. And then Council Crabbe, back to your original question when we first started this conversation. The buffers now, one of the UDO itself require for a property of this type, especially when it borders up against a single-family residential area, they have three options. They can go twenty feet with canopy trees, they can go ten feet with shrubs and ornamental grasses, or they allow for a thirty-foot undisturbed natural buffer. The only one that really differs right now is along the western edge where the condition now states that it's got to be a sixty-foot undisturbed natural buffer on that western edge. The other corners of that property, property lines itself, they will have some options they can actually work through with UDO unless you specify it in the ordinance tonight. Does that answer your question, sir? Thank you.
In respect to that response.
Hey, Council, just, excuse me, sir. Council Crabbe?
I'm sorry. Did he answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because I wanted a little bit of clarification.
Would you hit your button again? I'm sorry.
I wanted a little bit of clarification between the undisturbed, um, sorry, undisturbed buffer, thank you. And, you know, you were saying the other buffers with the grass and shrubs and then the canopy and all that. Can you explain the difference between those?
Well, the undisturbed buffer is exactly what it means. It cannot be touched. There are no utility lines, can go in there, no sewer lines, anything of that nature. It has to be remain as it is for sixty feet worth of buffer in there. Nothing else can go in there. It cannot be disturbed. The other buffers, like I said, the twenty-foot, the twenty-foot with a certain amount of canopy trees or understory trees and shrubbery, that's twenty feet of buffer. That's one option they have, the developer has. The other option is ten feet with shrubs and ornamental grasses they could put in there at ten feet. And then the other one is just simply thirty feet of undisturbed natural buffer. Those are their choices for the other three sides of that property. Again, I say that unless, unless council puts some kind of condition in that requires another, another buffer, another type involved here.
A gentleman earlier had asked about a buffer at Hidden, you know, on the Hidden Lakes side.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, what is the current, in the current rezoning, what would that buffer be on the Hidden Lakes side?
Again, that would be, that would be determined by the developer at this time under those three options I just read to you, whether it's either the thirty, I'm going to catch up here.
So are you saying that it could be as little as ten feet there?
It could, yes, ma'am. I've been told also because it bumped up on the west side right now, it could be, it would be zero from that standpoint, but now you get the sixty-foot going into play.
So that, okay, are you saying that it could be zero on the side next to Hidden Lakes?
I'm saying the south, I misspoke. On the western side, you've got, now you've got a sixty-foot buffer, undisturbed buffer on that.
Right.
On the south side itself, not the west side, the south side, it could be as little as zero. No buffer in there at all unless you dictate one.
Would that be budding up against the wall to Hidden Lakes? That's the, that's the south side?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Does that make sense now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Sir, you can continue.
I'd like to have a little bit of discussion on that. I don't know if the council's aware, but the west side along Norris Road is basically unmaintained. It's a natural site, basically stays overgrown, and I'm sure the office is aware of that. My main concern is that the buffer restricts the visual and noise pollution coming from the type zoning we're doing. What's there now, I don't believe will do that. I would like to see the contractor that develops it put something in that would do that. Hidden Lakes seems to have done that very well with a wall, and they did leave a little natural buffer along the street itself. I think the city maintains that mostly. I think that's probably what's on the right away that they hadn't cleared. But that's my thoughts. There could be a restriction to that effect if everybody agreed to it. Sixty feet may or may not be required to provide there, speaking as an architect. The other question was, Hidden Lakes condominium is a gated community. Is there a proposal to have this as gated?
That's a question for the petitioner. Do you plan on having your, is yours going to be a gated community? No, it's not. No, sir.
Hidden Lakes, you know, is a.
Yeah.
My main concern as far as being a property owner and all that is, of course, the value of my property and the neighborhood. And I'm not sure of who's going to be housed in these apartments. There was discussions of maybe some of the students, some of the military, which, yes, they all need housing. But the stipulation, if you would agree, that I would like to see in the rezoning of it is that it would not be government-supported housing or low-income housing. I moved to this neighborhood because I wanted to get away from all of that and what it brings to your community, not particularly who's living there, but what it brings into the That's my basic request if y'all see that the rezoning should proceed or whatever, but at least that stipulation be put in. And maybe something with a buffer, a little more defined and to provide visual and noise protection. Thank you, counsel.
Thanks, sir. Appears to be it.
Anybody else want to be heard? All right. Looks like that's everybody's hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Thomas.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure if they're for Mr. Cameron or for Mr. Jones, but, Mr. Jones, you've said a couple of times that the sixty-foot undisturbed buffer is on the western side of this plot.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's the Norris roadside. What, no.
No.
I'm sorry. Wait a minute. Let's let Mr. Jones answer.
Will, can you put this on?
I need you to show me pictures.
Try to indicate to you exactly what we're talking about. That's, that's the property that's under question now for rezoning. The, the western property is right here to this end, right here, where he's pointing to now.
Okay.
That would be, that would be the sixty-foot undisturbed natural buffer at that point.
Undisturbed natural.
Undisturbed natural. Yes, ma'am.
So will the houses that back up to that from Barbara Avenue be able to see onto that property?
The, I can't honestly tell you directly that that's, you won't be able to see any of the apartments ever, but the intent would be to provide that, that kind of buffering to prevent that from happening. But again, I can't guarantee that to you.
But what we can guarantee if we accept this is that it will be at least sixty feet deep.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, do, the location of the, of the apartment complex on the lot itself, do we have something that shows that, Mr. Jones?
We can show you what was submitted to us. I'm not sure whether it's changed. Will, that one's fine.
And Mr. Thompson, would you, would you, Norris Road is?
Right there.
There, okay. And this, and the?
That's north, south, east, west.
So the, the south side is where Hidden Lakes is, right?
Yes, ma'am.
On that, oh, okay.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to get, get my mind around all this. And then, Mr. Cameron, can you tell me what, I know this gentleman asked about restrictions on government housing and that sort of thing, and I know that we cannot, I don't think we can do that legally, but can you give me some kind of an idea of the range of rentals that you're looking at?
Yes, ma'am. Listen, we're going after working-class families. That's, that's what we're looking for. So our, our range of rent is between nine and twelve hundred dollars. So it's, yeah, it's up there.
And it's been a long time since I've rented an apartment in Columbus. I don't know, maybe Ms. Crabbe could tell me how that compares. Is that a typical range for?
That's a little bit on the higher end. Those are, those are the nicer apartments. I can defer to Ms. Yarmin there because she's the one who manages apartment complexes. I manage single-family.
Oh, okay.
Homes.
Can I just?
These are two-bedroom, two-bath. So think about your, your.
Wait, wait, wait.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. You've already, I apologize. You've already been heard from.
I apologize. That's my fault.
So I'll answer just a little bit here. We're, they will be, it's just a nicer product. I mean, that's what we're going for. We're, you know, we want to get, you know, good, strong families or individuals in here. So it's the, you know, it'll be a combination of different size units, but obviously the higher the rents, the better, and that's the, that's our plan. I mean, I.
And for the, for the planning department, currently there are three lots on that, but we're talking about combining that into one large lot. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. They'd have to come back and replat that to reflect that lot for the development. So they would be combining all three of them into one.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, did you have something?
I have a question.
You approached the podium.
Lauren Locklear, 2714 Barbara Avenue. My question would be, what exactly is the plan for the building? Because when we were here for the PAC meeting, the plan was to gear it towards college students, and that was all that was mentioned. And then tonight, we're here and we're doing it towards young professionals, military, and anybody that can afford a nine to twelve hundred dollar apartment. We have not seen a plan that has anything about two-bedroom, two-bath, a plan that has where dumpsters are, a plan that has where the parking lot is, other than block drawings and an idea of what he would like for it to look like. So my question would be, what is your plan?
Just to speak to that a little, this is what we expect the complex to look like. We've taken in some things in consideration of the neighbors. These buildings are turned sideways. There's been mention of some privacy issues. So we've taken the buildings. These are actually facing north and south as opposed to overlooking the folks on Barbara. To the left. So, you know, it's early, you know, it's expensive to go through, or to go through engineering before you get a rezoning. So obviously, we come here with a concept plan and then submit a full set of engineering plans after that, once we get through the rezoning, just because it's expensive. I mean, that's just all there is to it. You know, if I could just say, everything the staff has asked for, we've agreed to. The buffers are, intentions are to have buffers all the way around, not just, not just on Barbara. And some of that gets limited, is limited just from what we know so far because of engineering. So the buffer that was mentioned along the Hidden Lakes property, truthfully, this property, I think the only thing we're buffering is the guard shack at Hidden Lakes. I don't think it even goes that far down. So, but that said, we will have buffers on that side. You know, obviously, we'll have a nice landscape buffer coming on the, on the front along Norris Road because it just makes our property more valuable. We want it, we want it to look good. We want everybody to be proud of it. And same thing on the north side, you know, we'll, we'll follow the buffers set in place by the, by the city. And that property right now is vacant. So, hey, it just, I want to mention one other thing. The, I think there's a little bit of a misnomer with the neighbors here. This property does not run the full length of Norris Road. We are, we're only three hundred feet. So I think some people that think they back up to me don't. And so just, I just want to throw that out there, that it's not, I think a lot of people think they're being impacted just from the apartments backing up to them, and that's really just, just not the case there.
All right. Excuse me, Mr. Cameron. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, mayor. You answered one of my questions about the buffer on the, on the north side. What distance was the north side buffer, though? What depth is it or width or what?
As it shows now, truthfully, I think it's probably between twenty and thirty feet on that one.
Okay. So the, the project would entail you clearing out the footprint of what you have displayed up there and leaving all the terrain around.
That's right. That is absolutely our intention.
That's what, that's what details the undisturbed natural.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay. So I think the concerns I've heard tonight are the noise and the light pollution that would come. And so have you already talked about the lights? Has anybody asked you about the lighting yet before the parking lot and that kind of thing?
You know, truthfully, we haven't gotten into real depth about it, but, you know, obviously, we want to be good neighbors. So we're going to, you know, all that will be factored in. Along, the dumpster has come up several times. And truthfully, some of this stuff, just, it's hard to address until we get to the engineering phase. But again, we want to be good neighbors, so.
But I think in that vein, though, there, there is new technology in the lighting industry that would allow you to have smaller, shorter poles so that you don't have a sixty-foot pole up there with a light glowing. You would have something that's directed internally to the parking area.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Which would not shine or reflect into the Barbara Avenue residents.
That's right.
Especially with the buffer they have.
That's right. And along those lines, I think it was mentioned that there are some huge trees within that sixty-foot buffer.
Right.
So again, I wouldn't say you can't see a building, but it's, it's a good buffer. I mean, it's a, it's a good distance away. That's the buffer. Then you, you know, you would, according to this drawing, you cross the parking lot, a little more green space, and then you're at the building. So really, I mean, you may be a hundred feet, for instance, you know? So.
The other question I had was regarding the windows. So you've got the units themselves facing north and south, so there will be no windows on the west side of the building? Is that?
I don't want to say no windows, but minimal windows. Obviously, there's going to be a vast majority on the front and back. So it really kind of depends on that specific building, you know, whether it's a, if it's a bedroom, you know. a bedroom, you know, they gotta have a window. So, you know, it, it, it's kind of up in the air a little bit, to be honest with you.
Well, but, but you made a good point a while ago. You have a 60-foot buffer, and then you have a parking area, and then you have a bit of turf, and then you have the building where the window would be. So, you have close to 100 feet...
That's right.
Roughly...
That's right.
Away from the, the border of the yards on Barbara.
Yes, sir, yes, that's correct.
So, if you add in the distance from the lot line to the house itself, it's even more than probably 100 feet.
That's right, that's right.
So, I was just trying to clarify those two issues, the windows and the...
Yes, sir.
...the buffer on the north side, so...
Yeah, and the window thing will absolutely go into account when we're designing the buildings, that, you know, if they don't, if we, if it doesn't require windows, we, we won't put windows there. It just kind of depends on, on the layout, truthfully.
Okay.
So, I just, I don't want to mislead you, say, oh, we won't put windows, because, you know? But on the side, it would be minimal, you know?
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right, this lady, I think, had a question. You, ma'am? Yes, ma'am. You'll have to come to the podium, please. I just asked you to give your name and your address, and we've heard a lot of, of information, so just please tell us, no, just tell us, just tell us something new.
Lynn Tate, 2703 Barbara Avenue. One of the things that was addressed at the Planning Commission meeting for our concerns was a retention pond. There's no retention pond on that drawing, because we are 100 feet downhill, and that is a concern. There's a culvert in one backyard, there's a drainage ditch between two houses that backs up to that property. So, rain is a concern, a big concern. The other thing is, I'd like to ask Mr. Cameron if he can guarantee us that he's not going to turn around and sell that property to somebody else who might do anything with it, because it's Zonero.
They would.
Let me say this. My intentions tonight are to build the property, okay? If, who, I, it's, I just can't make that kind of guarantee that I would never sell it, I just can't. That's, my intentions are to build it, and if, you know, you know, I just, that, that's hard to say that no matter what, I won't sell it. I just, I can't, I can't say that. But that's not my intentions at all.
And Counselor Allen did point out that the conditions would remain, as, as spelled out in this, this petitioner's request, and, and there's been questions about subsidized housing. They're going to have to build something nice enough to be able to rent it and, and break even. And the only way I know they could do that is perhaps go after tax credits, and that, then this counsel has a say in that, because for tax credit financing, typically, there's a request of the local governing authority to submit some type of resolution encouraging support of that. And, and you would have an opportunity to address this counsel if that were to ever happen. Yeah. We can get our engineer, I'm sure, now, a lot of the stormwater, and I will tell you, and I'm sure our engineer will too, that when he submits his plans and goes through engineering, he has to meet some basic standards with regards to stormwater runoff, how he handles the water coming off, and why am I talking when you're there? Go ahead.
Yes, sir, you are correct. They will have to have some sort of detention to address the increase in runoff, as well as water quality. They'll have to take care of any pollutants that might come off of the property itself.
Okay. Ma'am, you'll, you can come up.
Evening, gentlemen, I know it's been a long, and ladies, I know it's been a long evening. My name is Betty Lewis. I'm a member of the HOA Board for Hidden Lake, and as first point I want to make is, we are an 85% owner-occupied complex. We are not an apartment complex. So, comparing a apartment complex to Hidden Lakes is like comparing apples to oranges. I'm sorry, okay? Second of all, could someone pull up that picture again, what's in this Zone 2, 3, and 4? Because you had told us that all three would be part of the complex. Only says on the, on the picture that only Zone 2 was going to be, is up for rezoning. It's, I want to get that clarified. Not that, yeah? Because the other picture was, showed the actual geographical thing, showed only Zone 2, a lot too. I thought you said all, all three lots are going to be zoned, or up for rezoning? Is that correct? Okay, so make sure it was, okay. Okay. And I also want, all the comments and questions and replies, no one has addressed the traffic problems. Already, the traffic problems are horrendous, especially when school's in session. It takes you 15, 20 minutes when school's in session to get off Norris Road on DeMacon Road to get to the highway, and that's on a good day. Plus, the fact there's kids trying to walk to school, because there's, live in the area that go to local schools. Some plan for the, for the traffic? I only see one entrance and exit on the, on the plans, and that's just going to jump right out on the Norris Road, make it even worse. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment for or against? Mayor, it looks like it. We've certainly had a full hearing. With, with these two conditions, this ordinance will be back for a vote in two weeks at our 9:00 meeting.
And we want to thank the petitioner and the residents for taking their time to be able to share their, their concerns. So, thank you all for being part of the process. All right, next, we'll move into the...
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've covered the business items, but we would request a short executive session just to address matters in litigation. That's all.
Okay. Excuse me. Yeah, we, we still have a few more things to cover, so... It's all right, we got it. All right, we'll move into the public agenda. Ms. Audrey Holston-Palmore, regarding an opportunity to verbally appeal to the council members for concern of a meeting with the risk manager. Ms. Palmore, and, and to anybody else who's watching, you have five minutes, and at the end of that five minutes, you will not be able to respond unless somebody asks you a specific direct question.
And I'll be able to ask for an additional...
Yes, you can come back with another three minutes at the end, if you like.
If necessary, yeah.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, selected and elected officials of the Columbus, Georgia city government which operates as a consolidated government...
Ma'am, I know, we know you, but if you wouldn't mind, state your name and your address.
Okay, I'm, I have that, I'm going to.
Okay.
Excuse me, my name is Audrey Holston-Palmore. I'm a resident of Columbus, Georgia, putting forth an effort to enjoy life at the address of 1035 Lauriers Lane in Midtown. For several months, I have taken advantage of my opportunity to apply, to appear on the public agenda of the council meetings. And I have been provided an opportunity to do so without conflict of any kind. Since the month of April in the year of 2018, my concern of what I have deemed an action of injustice has been my motivation for appearing. Since I am talking to officials of the city council, I hope the acts of injustice I've consistently spoken about will reach resolution sooner than later. The Division of Parks and Recreation denied and violated conditions of sanitary provisions by accepting funds directly from my daughter, a bona fide citizens of, citizen of Columbus, Georgia, with a lack of concern visibly shown, encountered during the event that my daughter paid to reserve. The reservation of the public park space without the enforcement of restroom facilities open for the social event of several invited guests is thought of by myself and others as an injustice. I am, I was an invited guest, and I am a citizen of Columbus, Georgia, very much concerned about the injustice that was endured. Several months have passed, and meetings with city officials, especially City Manager Isaiah Hughley, Assistant City Manager Lisa Goodwin, and Parks and Rec Director Holly Broder have been made. There have been negative comments responding to the meetings held verbally, there have been negative comments responding to the meetings held verbally, expressed by the city manager, opposing the communication expressed about the denial of duties of the personnel of the Division of Parks and Recreation. The risk manager was communicated with, by the city manager, and I was provided written communication on March 7, 2019, citing no negligence on the part of the city for which contents are questionable, as well as negligent in providing actual status, actual actions that took place. At the last meeting of the public agenda appearance that I made in June, it was expressed by city officials Glenn Davis, Clifton Fay, and Isaiah Hughley. They decided to tell me that they were going to turn this issue into a judicial matter, rather than use the approach of a review by the committee of the Risk Management Division. Since that time, there has not been the retainment of an attorney by myself or my daughter. And so, that's, therefore, I'm, like I said in my application, appealing to the city council to, I've already sent copies of a letter to the city council. I've sent letters to the city council, each councilor received a letter. And then, I sent a letter to the city attorney, asking that we be given an opportunity to meet with the risk manager. I'm asking for the additional three minutes, I will wait.
Okay, we'll see you at the end of the clerk's agenda. Thank you, Ms. Palmore. All right. And next on the public agenda is Ms. Loretta Wright, regarding judicial and governmental issues. Welcome, Ms. Wright. If you would, just state your name and your address, and please be advised that you'll have five minutes to address counsel, and at, at that time, you'll, you'll have to, you'll, you'll see a tone go off, okay?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Henderson, and the members of the city council. Before I come to you criticizing and critiquing, I am seeking answers to the following questions, because it's been a while since I've been involved in this community politically, okay? And so, as a citizen here, I see a lot of things that's wrong. But before I say it's your fault, your fault, you know, I want to know some things. One, what is the government? Two, who is included? Three, what are the mayor's duties and responsibilities? Four, what are the council members' duties and responsibilities? Five, what is the legal structure of Georgia? Six, how does the legal structure affect the citizens' rights? Seven, how bills are introduced and become law? Eight, what is justice? And is everybody entitled to justice? Nine, can the law be a burden on the citizens? Ten, when does a person serving in the government or judicial system becomes unqualified? Or unfit to continue serving for citizens? Now, before I, I would mean, I would be here, I will continue to be here, until every one of the things are my issues, not just me, really, but the other citizens in this city are considered. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a few things on my agenda here, and... First, I've got lease renewal, community garden at 2802 Bradley Circle, and requesting council-approved renewing the lease with Take the City for Use, and Take the City is a nonprofit organization, but Take the City for Use of a city-owned property at 2802 Bradley Circle for a community garden for $1 per year. The city has no immediate use for this property. The organization has been using this property for this purpose and will continue using the property as a community garden and is responsible for all operations and maintenance. And so, I'm asking you for approval to renew this lease.
Second.
There's a motion second for the, approve the lease renewal. Any discussion? If not, Bruce, please cue it. Counselors, please enter your votes. And that is approved.
A second item on my agenda is donation, donation of a storage building and portable generator. Approval is requested that Fire EMS would donate a 14-by-24 storage building and portable generator to the Columbus Firefighter Association, and the Firefighter Association will pay to have the building and portable generator moved to their location on Lynch Road.
Second.
Motion second to approve the donation. Any discussion? If not, please cue it. Counselors, please register your votes. And that passes.
Got next, Georgia High Demand Career Initiative Sector Partnership Grant Proposal. It's $254,500. There is no match, and it will go to workforce...
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? Not, please cue it. Counselors, please register your votes. That passes.
The next item is Historic Columbus Public Participation Grant. It's $71,250. There is no match. We're requesting approval to apply for the historic...
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? All right, please cue it. Register your votes. And that passes.
On the purchases, on the purchases, we've got contract extension for inmate food service management for the jail and prison. And so, we're asking that council will authorize extension of this annual contract for inmate food service management with Trinity Services Group, Inc.
Second.
Motion and second to approve A on the purchases. Any discussion or questions? If not, please cue the vote. Counselors, register your votes.
A... Second.
Motion and a second to approve the purchases, items B through H. Any item that needs to be pulled? All right, let's pull B for discussion. So, that leaves C through H in the motion. Any others need to be pulled? Is there a second? Did we already have a second? Did we already have a second? Okay, we've got the motion and a second for C through H. Any further discussion? If not, please cue the vote. And you may enter your votes. That's approved.
B, Mr. Mayor and council, is Salmon Road Traffic Signal Design. And we're asking that council will authorize the execution of a contract with Wolverton and Associates. It's $10,750 for the design of a new traffic signal at the intersection of US 80 Beaver Run at Salmon Road. And we believe that that is a good price, but if Georgia DOT makes any changes to the design, the costs may require adjusting, and we're asking council to approve that. And Mr. Mayor, will answer any questions.
Counselor Thomas.
Ms. City Manager and Ms. Newman and Counselor House and Counselor Allen, I know that we've been discussing this particular intersection for some time. The last I heard, there was a question of whether or not the Georgia Department of Transportation was going to support a signal at that site. Have we gotten that authorization? Are we?
Yes, ma'am. We've had another meeting with Georgia DOT, and they did their own traffic study. And currently at this time, it does now warrant a signal. Of course, that will have to be approved through the Atlanta office. We've been dealing with the district office, if you will, out of Thomaston. And what we agreed to was they're going to design the signal basically, and the improvements needed on the Beaver Run section, and the city would be responsible for design on the Salmon Road.
So this is, this is just the Salmon Road?
Salmon Road and Beaver Run, designing a signal and the turn lanes that are needed along with that. The city will be responsible for application to the DOT for the signal and for installation of the signal.
I know that Counselor House and Counselor Allen have been working on this for quite some time, and I was delighted to see this finally on the agenda for us to move forward and to do something. I just wanted to make, I just wanted to know about what we think the response from GDOT will be in dealing with this. We feel pretty good about it?
As far as?
Far as we're concerned, we do, because GDOT was the one that did the signal study, and the district office is in support of a signal at this location.
Good. That's, that's what the community out there wanted to do, so I'm glad, glad to hear that. Thank you. Thank you for all your efforts in that, too. I know that, that the City Manager and Donna Newman have really put in the hours to try to get this to this, to this level, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor Allen.
Let me just say that Johnny Floyd.
Johnny Floyd.
Johnny Floyd has, and I complimented him on in our meeting, he has gone out of his way to help us with it. He's made half a dozen. Johnny Floyd is the DOT Commissioner for District 2, which encompasses the Salmon Road area. And he personally has made half a dozen trips or more here to work with us on this. He was instrumental in pulling Lynn Westmoreland in, who represents District 3 on the DOT board as Commissioner, and they split Columbus proper. But they both have been instrumental in helping us with this. I think Commissioner Westmoreland called for the second study, or the last study, that pushed this kind of over the, over the threshold, over the goal line, so to speak. And they indicated to us that once we were able to get this study to them, that they would then take it to the Commissioner for final approval. And they, they rarely take things to the Commissioner that they don't think will be approved, is what, what I'm told. So, we're excited and encouraged by the work that they've done and the studies that they've provided for us, and working with Donna and her folks. So all you and your folks have done a great job, too. So it's all been team effort here.
Yes, thank you.
You might want to make a motion to approve?
Well, I do. I would love to make the motion to approve and ask Counselor House to second that.
That being a second.
Thank you.
Motion and a second to approve any other discussion. All right, please cue the vote. That passes.
Mr. Mayor, I've got two updates. The first one is going to be Community Reinvestment Director Laura Johnson. She's going to talk about surplus property. She's going to talk about the land bank. But I've also asked her to give just a brief update on the farmers market and on the, the fuel tanks down on, at South Cummings.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll go ahead and start out with the update on the Georgia Port property and the Farmers Market property. The Georgia Port property, as you know, it's located at 800 Lumpkin Boulevard, and we acquired it from the Georgia Port Authority back in December 2000, or 2018. At that time, we received $300,000 from the Port Authority to help put towards the demolition cost of the tanks and structures on the site. And the estimated demo right now is at $650,000. The city did put money in the budget for our portion of the demolition cost to be able to try to demo it this year. We are currently waiting on an updated quote from the demolition contractor just to ensure that it's still in the $650,000 range, and we hope to get that back here within the next couple of weeks. And once we get that back, we will schedule the demo, and we're hoping to have that property demolished by the end of the year. And for the State Farmers Market, that's at 318 10th Avenue. It was acquired by the State of Georgia in January 2019. We received a $500,000 grant from EPA to help clean up the contamination on the site. So far with that grant, we've submitted what EPA requires, all the grant documents, they're currently under review by EPA. The funding we're anticipating to be released October 1st, and we are working on the scope of work for completing the remediation activities right now. And once that scope of work is finalized, we'll put, you know, we'll put together an RFP, put the project out for bid for qualified contractors to bid to do the remediation at that site. And also after October 1st, we'll start, you know, working with the community, doing some community engagement activities, trying to explain to them exactly what we're doing on that site, and to get input from them on what they'd like to see at that site after the cleanup has occurred. Those are the two updates for that. So the presentation tonight is regarding some city-owned properties and how we can formulate a partnership with the Land Bank Authority to try to dispose of some of those properties. As of right now, Columbus has about 600 properties in our portfolio. Many of those properties are government facilities such as parks and recreation centers, office space like the Government Center, this building, Public Works, and then there's fire stations, public safety buildings, so on and so forth. There's also a lot of right-of-way acquisitions that's in our portfolio, like such as the Riverwalk property, detention ponds, green space watershed properties. So those are all properties that will always own, and so they'll always be in our portfolio. But then we also have properties such as vacant parcels that we've acquired over the years for future redevelopments. So talk a little bit about the Land Bank. The Land Bank is a tool that has more flexibility than the local government as far as disposing of properties. They're not governed by the local government regulation or laws, and they can consider money, so they can put out, you know, proposals for bids on the properties. They consider the money, but they can also look at outcomes, such as what that property will be used for, such as affordable housing, community gardens, or some other community So how we're looking at trying to partner with the Land Bank, as you all know, the Land Bank is temporarily funded with CDBG funds. That funding is going to be running out soon, and so we're looking at ways to be strategic and able to, and able to generate income for the Land Bank past June of 2020. We did some research on other land banks in Georgia, and we found that many cities provide land bank funding through their general fund. So for instance, Macon Bibb gives their land bank about $170,000 a year. The Atlanta Fulton County gives their land bank about $121,000 a year. And Albany Dory County gives their land bank about $100,000 a year out of the general fund. So what we're trying to do is be strategic. If we're not able to provide the Land Bank with general funded money, we're looking at other ways that we could possibly help provide revenues for them. One of those ways is to work with the Land Bank in selling city-owned properties that the city no longer needs. And what that would do for the Land Bank is it could help them generate proceeds by the sale of those properties, and then also they would benefit from the 75%, 25% tax recapture once those properties are put into taxable, back into collecting taxes once again. And how that would benefit the city is that the city would also generate income through the sale of the property and increase tax revenues. And then it would also place underutilized properties back into productive use and reduce maintenance costs and liabilities that we currently have by having these properties in our portfolio. So what we're looking as a way to dispose of these properties in the Land Bank is that after we bring the properties to City Council for approval, and after they're approved, we would like to quickclaim those properties over to the Land Bank once the Land Bank has identified an end user. We would want to wait, we want to get council's approval, but we don't want to deed them right away, because the Land Bank has the same issues as the city. Once a property goes into their hands, they're responsible for maintenance and all, and they're already lacking funding, and they can't afford to be spending money to maintain these properties, just like the city. The city, and so what we're asking is that the city would still be responsible for maintenance until the Land Bank has disposed those properties to an end user. But what we're looking at, too, is also how can the Land Bank and the city both benefit from these properties? So we're looking at trying to determine proceeds of the sale and how they'll be distributed based on a case-by-case basis. So for instance, say the City Council approves deeding a property to the Land Bank, the Land Bank finds an end user, and they're going to use it, say it's just a property that's stuck in between two other properties, and it's just being underutilized, it's too small to build a house on, what they might do is consider selling it as a side lot to one of the adjoining neighbors. So in that instance, you know, it might just be a couple thousand dollars. The city may consider just allowing the Land Bank to keep that $2,000 to put into their revenues to acquire more properties. Or if there's a property that might be a little bit higher value, we could look at that property on a case-by-case basis as well, and then maybe consider allowing the Land Bank and the city to split the proceeds. So maybe the Land Bank take 50% of the proceeds and return 50% back to the city. Or else the city allow the Land Bank to keep the proceeds. Because knowing that in the end, the proceeds would be used for the Land Bank to continue operations. So allowing the Land Bank to earn fees and keep a portion of the revenues will generate income to keep the Land Bank active in the future. So right now, we've kind of went through some of our properties, and we've came up with a list. And this list is properties that we've had some interest in in the past. So we want to make sure that when, before we decide to deed properties over to the Land Bank, that the Land Bank actually, or we actually have somebody who has interest in it. So I'll go through these properties individually. The first property we'd like to consider is 4020 J Street. It's an old fire station that's located on the corner of J Street and Lowell Drive. It's been vacant since 2016, and the city no longer needs this property for anything. We average that the maintenance costs are about $1,200 a year. Crews have to visit the site twice a month between April and September to do maintenance, cut grass and all of that. The Tax Assessor has this site listed as $28,280 as their fair market value. We have had inquiries from different individuals on this site. And then one thing that we would consider is that once this site is put into another person's hands, then it will start once again generating tax revenues for the city. The second one we'd like to consider is 40824 Street. It's a piece of property that was acquired as part of a road project way back when. It's been leased to the 24th Street Baptist Church for $300 a year since 2000. The church currently maintains the property. But this property, I just wanted to note, that's the only access that the church has onto that site, or into their parking lot, because from the other side, there's no access onto, into their parking lot. The church is, does have interest in purchasing this property, and the fair market value for it, for the Tax Assessor site is $28,230. This is another site that we've had some calls about that a couple of different individuals are interested in. It's vacant land that sits on the corner of Peak Industrial Drive and Warm Springs Road. The fair market value for a Tax Assessor site is about $59,000. And again, this property, once it's transferred into a productive use, will generate tax revenues for the city. This is another site, 3645 St. Mary's Road. It's a vacant parcel that sits in between two houses. The city acquired it in 2007 as part of a road project. The estimated value of this parcel is about $7,500. And again, disposing the property reduced maintenance costs for the city and increased property tax revenues. The next one is nine separate parcels of vacant property. It totals 2.72 acres. And as you can see from the picture, this property is landlocked. It can never be redeveloped. There's a guardrail that runs along St. Mary's Road and houses on the other side. Public Works came to us a while ago to see if there was any way we could try to dispose of these properties to the owners that own the property on Robin Road as side lots. The reason being is they have a hard time maintaining this lot because the guardrail, it's hard to get tractors and all back there to mow the grass and everything, and so they're spending a lot of time, and as you can see, around $6,400 a year to maintain this property. So we have already went on out and talked to neighbors, and the neighbors there do seem like they're interested in, you know, acquiring these properties as side lots. So what we'd like to do is deed them to the Land Bank and let the Land Bank work with the neighbors in trying to dispose of these properties.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Huff.
Would they be working with the neighbors to give that property to add to their land?
Yes.
Okay, so it would become like a larger, a longer backyard?
Longer backyard.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
The next, the next lots are three, are four lots that are at Lennox Drive and Lowell Drive. They're five parcels totaling about .91 acres. It's located in the Benning Hills neighborhood. Estimated about $25,000 for all of the lots. And these properties have been owned by the city since 1993, and it appears the city acquired them through tax sale back in 93. And they've never been used, they're vacant parcels. And this last property is 423 22nd Street. It's .11 acres, and it was acquired by the city in 2003. It sits close to the corner of Fifth Avenue at 22nd Street, which is the unopened portion of 22nd Street. So this property is also landlocked, as you can see from the picture. 22nd Street goes down between Rose Hill School and this other property, and this property's located behind it, so there's really no access to it. But we do have somebody that's interested in this property because they want to be able to clean it up. The estimated value is around $3,500. And what we're hoping to do is bring these properties back at the next council meeting for a vote to deed them to the Land Bank. And please let me know if you have any questions.
All right, Counselor Crabbe.
On these properties that, do we have signage or anything that we could put on these properties? Kind of like when a real estate agent lists a property that, you know, then people that might be interested in that property, they know who to call?
Yeah, we do not. We have some for the city. The Land Bank is, will be making some signs that they can put on the property, but the Land Bank will also be advertising these properties on their website and, or on their Facebook page and other, other ways of advertising. But we can look at them getting some signs to put on the properties as well.
So when would the signage go up? Would it be when the City Council approves for these properties to go into the Land Bank?
Yeah, I think it would be once, once City Council approves us deeding them to the Land Bank, then we could go ahead and start advertising through the Land Bank.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Huff?
Just had a quick question for Director Hodge, Assistant Director, Deputy Director Hodge. On the one that she mentioned on Lennox Drive and Lowell, would that be anything of interest to our, my favorite constituent that keeps up with everything over on the Benning Hill side? side?
The properties would be made available to anyone who wanted to put a bid in on them, so.
Okay.
They would have to bid, there would be a process for that.
Okay.
Through the land bank.
I didn't mean him personally, but I mean just in interest of the neighborhood and other neighbors and things of that nature.
Absolutely.
We want to keep up with the streetscapes and everything. We want to keep him updated, know what's going on, so we'll, I'll talk to him soon.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Councilor Thomas?
Ms. Hodge, did I hear you say that they would be, that it would be a, and, and, I don't, let me back up. If the estimated value of this is around $25,000, is that what we would put it on the market for? Or the land bank would put it on the market for, or how does that work?
We would look at trying to determine the property value based off of other values in the area, but if we needed to, we would get them appraised to determine what the value would be.
And then we would advertise it at that?
We would advertise it at that, but the one thing the land bank has is they have room to negotiate prices. So we would, we could advertise it at the, whatever the appraised value comes back as. But we would be able to look at these properties on a case-by-case basis. So for instance, somebody wanted to acquire the properties to put affordable housing or something on it, we could look at providing them that land at a discounted rate in order for them to produce affordable housing. So it would be looked at as a case-by-case basis because the land bank has the authority to be able to do that.
So we have a little more leeway than we do in other properties that the city owns that people may want to purchase, is that?
Correct.
Correct.
The land bank has a little more leeway.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Huff?
Apologies to Deputy City Manager. Hodge, I think I continued to demote you from directors to deputy directors. I know you've worked hard for this, so my apologies.
Oh.
All right. Any more questions?
If not, Mr. Mayor, I've got one final update. It's our...
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for what you're doing with those properties.
Yeah, I was about to say, it's our favorite topic, the Government Center. And Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge is going to present.
Put that in the land bank and try to, it's worth a try.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is just the continuing discussion of the Government Center options and moving forward. And just a little history, I know we haven't really talked about this and more for the public as well, but the original courthouse was a wooden structure on that actual site that were burned down. This is actually a picture of the second courthouse from around 1838 to 1840, which was done for about $36,000. The Muskogee County, the third courthouse was built in 1896 for $63,500. The current Government Center, which was built 1969 to 1970 for $11 million. So the existing building is actually the fourth courthouse for Columbus. The tower is 205,000 square feet, the wings 72,000 square feet. The parking garage has 264 spaces of 175,000 square feet. We have seven Superior Court Judges and five Senior Judges, three in the 1970s. So just a comparison of how we've grown over basically the last 50 years. Two State Court Judges currently, no State Court Judges back in the 70s, one Municipal Magistrate Judge. In the 70s, we had one of each of those Judges. Three Juvenile Court Judges, one in the 1970s. Currently, we have one Probate Court Judge and one Associate Probate Court Judge. In the 70s, we had one. And we also have administrative judges that work out of the Government Center. Just to share some pictures of the third courthouse, the one prior to the existing Government Center. These pictures were actually taken off of the Ledger. They have a archived video of the demolition of the prior courthouse. It's very interesting for anyone who wants to go and look on the Ledger site. In this particular picture, you can see the Springer to the top, just to get you oriented on how this building was oriented on the actual site. Another picture just of that prior facility. And as you can see in this picture, the Government Center that's currently on that site being built. And this shows how close those buildings were to each other. This is really the plaza level, right next to the prior courthouse. And you can see how the Government Center was built behind it with the courthouse right in front of it. The challenges, as you all know, we've had over the last several years, continue to have security and safety challenges, not being ADA compliant, not being able to separate court parties during court hearings, one shared elevator for prisoner transport, and inadequate holding cells. The fire suppression system is limited to the first floor, as well as narrow stairwells, no pressurization, and we have internal egress. When you leave the stairwell, you're still exiting inside the building. Inefficient and failing systems. We have outdated systems, the water, the sewer, heating, cooling, a lot of those are original to the building, and we're unable to find replacement parts. And we've heard from Director Beigler at many council meetings about how her staff is having to make parts for those systems. The short-term plan, council did approve this evening, moving forward with the life safety improvements. That was authorized by council, $2.8 million back in 2018 in the bonds. What was approved tonight was the, moving forward with the stairwell pressurization, as well as the fire alarm system replacement. And that's obviously to keep employees and citizens safe in that facility until such time as council determines how we move forward. We're still continuing to evaluate the existing system to determine about a sprinkler option for the entire building. So we are moving forward with that. As we've talked about the options, again, option one is a complete demolition of the wings and the garage to provide a new judicial center on the existing site and a renovation of the tower for administrative purposes, as well as a new parking garage. Option two on the existing site is a complete demolition of all the buildings and providing for new structures, a judicial and admin facility, as well as a parking garage on the existing site. Option three is existing and a new site is demolition of the facilities, putting a new judicial center on that existing site with a parking facility and moving the administrative offices to a new location. And option four is providing a new location for both the judicial and the administrative functions that's currently housed on that site. So at the last council meeting, the recommendation was to eliminate option one and three, and council has approved to move forward with doing the study on option two, which is the demolition of the buildings on the existing site and providing for new facilities on the existing site. Continuing to look at option four and any variations of that, as far as a new site for those facilities.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I am going to pick up with recommendations from here, and I always tell them to step back from the mic when I get ready to make these recommendations to you, because there's no telling how it's going to turn out. But a couple of recommendations tonight that I hope you will vote on. You know, we've put option two in the study category, and we told you we would come back with further discussion on option four. But I heard you at the last council meeting, some of you talked about the need to study or look at what it would cost or take to renovate the tower. And so, what I'd like to ask you to consider approving tonight is to actually allow us to do a feasibility study on renovating the tower. The only way that you're going to be able to tell your constituents that you at least gave it a good look, if that's not the option that you finally decide to go with, the only way you're going to be able to tell them that you gave it a fair look is to take a look at it. And that would take a feasibility study. And if you approve doing a feasibility study, just some of the things that we think that feasibility study would have to include would be identifying suitable space for temporary relocation during renovations. I can't figure any way that you can renovate an 11-story building while day-to-day operations is going on, where the courts are operating, and you've got IT going, and you've got everything else going with cranes and the noise and all that would occur. And so if we're going to look at renovating the building, we would have to look at, as part of the feasibility study, we would have to identify and determine the cost of, for space to temporarily, temporarily relocate during renovations. There's a cost to that. And we would have to look at whatever space we would be able to identify, retrofit in that space to accommodate courtrooms with holding cells and administrative offices. And so, in other words, you go and identify 200,000, 300,000 square feet. We determine what it would cost to go in and retrofit, renovate that 200,000, 300,000 square feet to make it usable, suitable. And then there's a market rate, rental rate for that, and then there's a cost of renovating. We would have to determine all of that as part of the feasibility study. We'd have to look at what it would cost to have security at that identified location versus the security that we have at the current Government Center Tower. And one of the huge costs and more scary things to do would be to relocate the Information Technology Department. You know, you want to renovate it to a temporary location, and then when you renovate the building, then you bring it back to the renovated building. There's a cost for all of that. But the only way you're going to know that cost is to say to us, we want the feasibility study. And I think we probably need to do a feasibility study to be able to provide you that, that you can share that with the citizens, your constituents. And so, Mr. Mayor, I would ask that council would consider, you've got two over in the study category, and I'd ask that renovating the building, the feasibility study be put into that category as well.
Okay, Councilor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, I would assume that whoever would do this study would be a professional in the field.
Absolutely.
To do that. And so, I would not want, I would want us to make sure that this is worded in such a way that if something else, if this professional feels there's something else that they need to look at, that they are authorized to do that.
Sure.
That they're not just limited to this. And one of the things that I would like to see done too, I've heard, for example, if we go in there and we renovate floor by floor, that will be difficult to do because the electric, electrical system.
That's right.
Goes the entire building.
That's right.
So all of those kinds of things, I would like to see included in the study as much as possible.
Well, actually, when we, when we pull together the specifications, if you will, for the study, I want to bring it back to you and say, here it is, and here's what we are asking that be included. Because if there's something we left out, and you can think of, or someone watching by television can call you or call us and say, well, I didn't hear them include that because we need to get it right.
If I might add, I think to Councilor Thomas's point, instead of listing that as an definitive list, I think we just list those things that we think of and say, including but not limited to.
Yes.
And then leave it up to the professionals.
Whoever the professional is would know, I think, better than probably all of us combined.
And I agree, I think we're saying the same thing. This is our list, and we will probably think of something else tomorrow, and then we'll give it to the professional and say, tell us if we included everything. And when they list all the things that should be included, we're going to bring it back to you and say, here it is, and we're ready to proceed. And so, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor House?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur that we need to find this out, and so if we need a motion, I make the motion. There we do it.
Does, does, does a motion just pertain to the?
Just this one.
Okay. All right, there's a motion in a second to add that to our study list. Councilor Crabbe, is your question to this motion? Well, then I'll probably turn your light on.
Do we have any idea how much this is going to cost?
That's the thing about these options. That's why we were trying to narrow them down.
No, the feasibility study.
I don't know. Don't know.
You will.
At this time.
Council will approve.
I mean, we're going to come back to you.
Yeah.
You will know and determine whether you want us to proceed or not with it, because we're going to come to you and say, you approved...
The million dollars, I thought, was for the design process, which included them with the consultant.
The million dollars is for the, the study to determine the cost of these options.
Right.
So it would be part of the million dollars that was in the bonds that were issued in 2018. But the contract, when the award is done, will come back to council for approval, and you will see how much it costs to evaluate each option and this feasibility study.
So this feasibility study is coming out of that $1 million?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Did we get a vote?
Oh, we had, no, we didn't. We had a motion second. I thought we were...
He weren't supposed to vote.
Well, okay, there's a motion in a second to include the renovation in the study. Any other discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, that'll be a third option, I guess, we look at.
That's the second one that they've approved so far.
Okay.
And so, here's another one, Mr. Mayor and Council. I want to be clear that we're not asking you to declare the Government Center Tower surplus. We're not asking that. But we're asking you to allow us to advertise the Government Center Tower, not the wings, the tower. We're asking you to approve advertising the tower for sale. And, and it would be advertised for sale with lots of conditions. And, and this would allow us to determine if there is any interest out there while we're going through these studies. It will help us determine whether there's someone out there interested in purchasing the tower. And if they are interested, we would have all of the conditions listed that they would have to agree to if they want to express interest. Now, this would, the cost for this as an option would be the cost of appraisal. We want to know the value of the tower, not the east or west wings, the tower. We want to know the value. And so, if you were to allow us just, and we can refuse any and all, it doesn't mean we're selling it, it's, we're trying to determine if there's interest only. And, and I can tell you that we have had some calls with the interest. And, and I will say that the calls that we've gotten, we believe that they are people with the capacity financially. the capacity financially to purchase it if they want it. So with that said, if we were, if you were to say to us, you can advertise, we're not declaring the government center surplus, but we'll advertise it and see if there's interest. It would be with these conditions, we'd need to have a resolution of the site for the county seat. We'd have to resolve the question, or if there's an issue. This is the county seat, it would have to be resolved to say that you could sell it if you want to, because you could do something different. Or you're going to parcel it out from the east and west wing, and you could, it would still be the county seat, because you could put the courthouse where the wings are, which is kind of where it used to be. That's why we showed you those pictures. And so, we'd have to resolve that question. Then, if we advertise it for sale, whoever was interested would have to know that we are going to remain in the tower during construction of a new facility, so that we have our courtrooms and all the space already built out, and we can move out of the government center and directly into the new building. It would have to be with the understanding that rent during construction of our new building while we stay in the tower would be no more than market rate or less. It would be with the understanding that we want a say in what would go in the tower. In other words, we want commercial retail, we want condominiums residential, we want hotel, or a combination of all three. I was, I mentioned to you, I was in Nashville a few weeks ago, and it was an AC hotel, but the lobby where you register for your guest room was on the sixth floor, because they had other stuff down below. So, you know, we want, consider, commercial, retail, condominiums, apartments, hotel, or combination of all of the above. So, we want to control what goes in there. We would want to make sure that we are very clear, and it's in a contract or an agreement, that if we sell it to you, that there has to be ongoing activity, and there's a timeline for getting everything done once we move out of the government center tower. In other words, you can't go and take the windows out and tear it all down to the concrete and then let it sit for two years like the old building at Sixth and Eighth, and nothing is going on, and it's an eyesore, and we've got a new building right next to it. We're not having that. There would be reverberatory penalties and all of everything that goes along with it. And then there would need to be the timeline that says that your development, that you're going to do, the retail and condominiums, apartments, or hotel, would have to be done within a certain number of months or years, 24 months, 36 months, whatever it is, or there are conditions and penalties that we would have to deal with, because we want this to move rapidly as we move out, and we might have a building next door to it, we don't know. There would have to be a parking arrangement, shared or independent. And these are just a list of some of the things that we've thought of, because if we decide, if you decide you're going to let us advertise, we go to our real estate lawyer and let him help build out these conditions and situations to make sure that we got all of the i's dotted, t's crossed, and there are no surprises. So, but there have been some interested parties that we believe have the capacity financially to do this, and so we're only going to know if it will sell if we advertise it. And so, I would ask you to approve allowing us to advertise it for sale, not declaring the building surplus, because it's not surplus, advertising it for sale, and then that means that we will get it appraised, so that we know that we get a fair market value for it. So, I ask you to consider approving that tonight.
We've got several counselors with some comments. Counselor Garrett?
You know you've got my support for this motion, so I will make the motion. I wouldn't, Mr. City Attorney, could we specifically include a condition that cannot be sold to a nonprofit, because I want this building to stay on the tax rolls.
I'll second that motion.
Well, in the, in the future, that could certainly be a restriction that's required. I just wanted to add, before we even get to the formal list, that we are going to have to have relief from the Georgia General Assembly on part of this for, you know, if there's any sale of a piece of this courthouse property, what was known as the courthouse property in 1838. But, you know, with that caveat, then yes, you can have all sorts of conditions or restrictions on a sales contract.
Well, I think this is our cost of appraisal feasibility study, because if the private sector doesn't want the building, it's not feasible. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
But I'll make, I made the motion.
All right, there is a motion on the floor and a second. To the motion, Counselor Crabbe?
Why just the tower? Why not the wings? Why not everything?
Well, that's a decision that this council can make, but I can tell you that I was bringing to you the tower, because there's still a lot of discussion in number two option, and, I mean, I'm hearing from lawyers every day and everybody else, that some people want something on site, and so-
But if we're not, if we're not really putting it up for sale, we're just seeing if people are interested, then what difference does it make? We can, we can get that interest on, on the wings as well as the tower.
Well, but if they are interested, and then we get serious about it, I just didn't think you would want to fight with everybody else over not being able to-
And I think that-
-have something on site.
As we, as we gauge the interest from anybody that might have interest, certainly we could then ask them, would they be interested in the entire parcel, just for the information? So, I mean, I don't think, I don't think it's out of the question. I just, I think that we were reacting to some intriguing inquiries we got from a couple of people. We thought, and with some of the things they talked about, it was more feasible with just the tower.
Well, and the deputy city manager, Ms. Mayor, was just saying that we could do the wings as an option if you-
Yeah.
-want us to do that.
Yeah, we could, we could ask them, because really what we're asking the authority to do is put out an RFI, just a request for interest from anybody who, in that property, and we'll just gauge the level and the amount and the width of that, that interest.
So, the proposal tonight is to do the tower, but if that's something that council wants, you know, we'll do whatever you got us, direct us to do.
Okay.
I have another question.
Okay.
I'd, I'd like to add a structural inspection to, to the appraisal, just so, I mean, if we, if we realize that it's structurally sound, then that's going to add value to the property.
Well, I guess my thought, Ms. Mayor, is that the structure would be looked at in the renovation, because we would not want to take on-
Right.
And so, you've already approved renovation, so we, we would want to know about the structure as part of that.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. But I, but I think if somebody came up with some interest initially, I think it's their due diligence to determine the structural soundness of it, so.
Counselor Thomas?
I'm a little confused as to why we want to do this, why we want to advertise that it's for sale, sort of. I can understand, I've had people talk to me about, well, we may want to, you know, buy the property. I can understand getting an appraisal, and I would be in favor of getting an appraisal of the tower, getting an appraisal of the wings, getting appraisal of the entire block. But I think if we, and maybe the terminology is what I don't understand here, if we say we're advertising this for sale, I think that's going to confuse a lot of people, that we, that the decision has been made, that we're moving out of the tower and we're going to do something else, and that decision has not been made. And so, I would, I would fully support our looking at getting an appraisal of however we want to get the appraisal, but I don't, I don't understand, I guess, why we want to say we're, we're talking about doing this at this point to sell it. It may be down the line when we get back some of the studies that we're doing, that we say, yeah, selling it is the way to go.
Well, and Counselor Thomas, certainly if, because we're going to consult the real estate lawyer, and my terms are, they're limited, because that's not what I do. And we would be talking to the real estate attorney to see if I should be saying sale or saying something else, you know, and certainly, but we wanted direction from you, so that's the first thing. But the other thing is, if we advertise, excuse me, if we appraise it, and we get an appraisal, and we say it's worth this, and we do nothing with it, I mean, people could say, well, I'll, I want to entertain talking to you about it, but, but talking to us has to go further. I've got to know that, you got to know that here's the, if we're going to have a discussion, here are how things will have to go in terms of what's going to happen. We buy property all the time, because we want to really control development. We got to, I think we got to control what goes there if something, if we decide to sell, but, but, but I think they've got to know the terms and conditions, and, and I say advertise it for sale, because when you've had several interested parties with financial capacity to come and talk to you, they may just be talking, and, you know, this is an opportunity to put up or shut up, really. And so, I just, we just, that's the only way we're going to know.
Well, I, I think that it's, in my mind, it's too early in the game to do that, to advert, to say this property may be for sale. We, we are still looking at options, and it may be for sale somewhere, somewhere down the line.
Well-
But I just, I just feel uncomfortable with what you have presented to be a, an official action that this council takes. I think that if somebody comes to you and says, I'm, I'm interested in buying the tower, you can certainly say to them, well, in order for you to do that, there are, there are going to be some conditions, you know that, like there's going to, we're not going to sell to a nonprofit, and we're not going to do this, and we're not going to do that and the other, and if you're still interested, when we get to, if we get to that point, if we get to that point, you know, we'll, we'll talk to you. But I, I just, I just think it's going to be too confusing for folks that will think that we have already made the decision, and we have not.
Well, and I guess the goal was, Sue, when we, when we spend, start to spend that million dollars, we want to provide you the study on option two, the study on option four, the feasibility study to renovate, and we want to say, by the way, here are those, if we have any, who are interested in purchasing, and if there are none, there are none, and so you'll have all of this information at the same time.
And I appreciate that, and one of the things, Mr. City Manager, that I see, is that in that feasibility study for the renovation of the tower, one of the items on that may be, you're better off to sell it, or you're better off to do something else with it. I, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with our looking into it. I have a problem with our saying-
You don't want to see it on Zillow, right?
Yeah.
Well, Ms. Mayor, I, I don't, now, I know there's a motion in a second, I don't know where you, where-
Well, I think-
-council wants to go with it, but-
No, I understand. I mean, I think what we had set is sort of a course to follow with this, is just if, is take into account any motion that's put on the floor, if, if there's, and if it doesn't pass, and I, I think, and I agree with Counselor Thomas, I think the, we had talked previously about, about an RFI, just a request for interest, anybody interested in that before we even, it was really a way to check a box, because we've heard a lot of people, I've heard people asking about, you know, why don't you carve out just the tower and sell it? And, and, and so, this was just another box to be checked.
And, and I think we can do that. I, I think without being an official request for interest, we can say to, in whatever way we can say it, to the general public, if you're interested, call Richard Bishop, and here's his number, and tell him what you're ready to do, or call Pam Hodge, or do, you know, whatever, and get that interest without it being an official-
Right.
-RFI. That, that's what concerns me.
We've got a couple other comments, counselors queued up. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I, I understand your concerns. I guess I'm not as concerned about that, because I'm in this business, and so, I don't do commercial, but I do believe that commerc, that commercial is a little bit different than residential, and you can put it kind of in this, I don't know, like a pocket listing or kind of a limbo, where it's not really on the market for sale, but like what Skip is saying, you know, where it's, you know, you're putting it out there to see if anybody's interested, and if, if somebody will put forth an offer. And I think that that's really important for us to know, along with all the other information that we're trying to gather, because wouldn't it be nice if we, if we could put together a deal, and that could, that could help support the building efforts that we're about to make, instead of it all coming from bonds lost or mileage increase? I mean, I, I, we'll never know unless we have that information, and we can't get that information unless we really open it up to as much possibility as possible. And it also might create an interest that we can get a higher price for it if we chose to sell.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Allen?
I know so little about the real estate market. At the risk of sounding immature or something else, what's the process? I mean, if we, if we approve your request, and we advertise it, and, I mean, we appraise it, and they come back and say, it is, this is a condition, and it is a marketable piece, would we then put out an RFI, or could we do them at the same time? I'm, I sympathize with some of Counselor Thomas's comments, I'm just, I'm just trying to-
Yeah, well, what I-
-get a feeling for what the process is.
So, what I would do, if you gave us at least the nod to-
Entertain.
Yeah, we're, we're going to go to a real estate attorney and let them package it all, and then we can come back to you before it goes out and say, you know, tell me if this is, because I want to make sure that we don't, even with renovation, that's why I want to bring that back to you, because I don't want, after the fact, you know, around the table, we're saying, well, we should have done this, we should have done that. We want to make sure that we've heard from you, and, and that we share it publicly, because someone out there watching will say, well, they should have done this, and then they're going to call you, and you're going to send it to us.
Yeah.
We want to get it right.
Yeah.
And the same thing with this sale. We're going to go to a real estate attorney, we're going to come back, and we're going to say, here's, we're going to lay out how it's going to work, and what the conditions are going to be, and somebody out there watching, who's smarter than a lot of us, they're going to call somebody, and then we're going to tweak it, and we're going to get it right, and then we advertise. And there's no- And there's no, you know, just because someone expressing interest, obviously you don't have to sell it, you're trying to determine the interest. And, but at least, and we've got a TAM LAN and Deputy City Manager Hodge didn't go through the TAM LAN. It's next, he said. Because we, we need to do the studies and get all of this in that TAM LAN if we are going to be the November 20, on the November 20 ballot.
Right.
So I wanted to bring you option two, option four, renovation and sale, and just, here, here it is. Give us some direction. But you've got everything.
So, so in, in seeking the interest out there.
Yes.
Obviously, you don't put a real estate sign in front of the building.
No, we're not.
But there's, there's some type of way to market that interest.
That's right.
And it's not.
That's right.
Yeah. So I, that's where I have a little comfort in that it's going to those that, at that level.
That's right.
That would either have interest or know somebody.
That's right.
So, okay.
That's it.
All right. Counselor Crabbe, do you have something?
I just wanted to say that appraisal would probably happen because we wouldn't know what price to advertise it at.
Yeah.
So we'd have to kind of determine if.
Yeah. So.
All right, there's a, there is a motion on the table and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. So we, for those in favor, raise your right hand, please.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Those against?
One.
So, Mr. Mayor, final.
We got Counselor Huff.
Yes, sir.
You almost needed him. I have to leave, but I want to hear what you have to say.
Well, the final thing is actually option four.
Okay. Go ahead, I'll wait.
Option four.
Okay. I just wanted to apologize ahead of time. I got a funeral service in Atlanta in the morning 11:00, so I got to hit the road tonight. So I'm going to pack and hit the highway, so I got to go.
Drive safely.
We understand. We got to go pack, too.
Right.
We ain't even, not even going to bed. Counselor Thomas?
And my no vote, Mr. City Manager, was on the officialness of this. I think the information is necessary.
Sure.
I just want to make that clear.
Thank you, ma'am.
So quickly, Counselor Huff, on option four, new site, new judicial center, new administration building, new parking garage. It may be too late for you to take this up, but I need a vote on, we've got option two, which is on-site. Option four would be off-site. Locations to be determined. And so if you gave us the, if we were able to put option four in the study category, we would be looking at what off-site locations are available and what makes sense. And we would be bringing you a study that would identify off-site locations and what it would cost to do it off-site. And so I really want you to vote on option four to allow us to study off-site.
And option four allows, I think, you to do most of the configurations that I've heard mentioned around here, whether it's three or four buildings, well, that has to be off-site.
That's right.
If connected to the jail. Don't know that's going to happen, not promoting it, but if it's to be looked at, we have to approve option four. Putting the other building over somewhere in Liberty or around midtown or wherever it goes, those have to, those, those have, we have to have option four.
We'd be looking at all of the options off-site and then what we would have from you is all of the options that we're going to proceed to study, on-site, off-site, renovation, sale. And then we're going to try and start, go to work with all of that and then bring back something that you can look at and the citizens can look at.
Counselor House?
I move that we study option four.
Motion? Motion and a second to study option four. Any further discussion or questions? Counselor Crabbe?
I'd, I'd really like to move forward on these because I'm a little bit concerned about spending $2.8 million on the tower for life-saving if we're not going to use that tower, if we're going to demolish it, or if we're going to sell it. I mean, that's 2.8 million that we could put into two or four. So I'd kind of like to move this forward so that before we start spending that money.
We would, too.
Well.
But I'll tell you the challenge, yeah, if you, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. City Manager.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I was just going to say, I think it, you could ask, it's up to the city attorney, but because we've been put on notice about these, these shortcomings, we are in a tough-to-defend position if we don't take some action to try to correct some of those.
And, and we said early on, we know that we were spending money that we were just, yeah, I don't even want to say it, you know?
Yeah.
That's true.
Well, that's true. Absolutely. Now, that makes, that's, that's true. So, Mr. Mayor, we'd ask for a study, option four.
And there was a motion and a second to add option four to the list of things to be studied. Any more questions or discussions? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Hey, Columbus, Georgia, it's your girl Shirley Burrow.
Any opposed?
And I'm coming to your city on August 31st.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
For Soul Fest 2K19, being held at the Columbus Civic Center. What are you waiting for? Why don't you have your ticket? Baby, we are going to have a ball, y'all. So, you don't want to be sitting home.
That concludes my agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor, just quickly, the TAM LAN.
The TAM LAN.
So I will be very quick on the TAM LAN. This is the planning process TAM LAN. The RFQ has been issued. The bids are due back by September 13th. And as we move into September, we'll continue to get the RFPs out for the construction manager at risk as well as the project manager. We hope to have a design contract back to you in November, who, they will start evaluating the options that council has approved this evening. And just a reminder of the SPOLOST TAM LAN that we're working towards, the first series of public meetings to start in October through the February time period. We're starting to get those scheduled. We'll bring that back to council for your approval. And then as we move into the 2020, we'll look at a second round of public meetings, council presentation in July for a call for election in August for the November ballot. So we'll just continue to remind you of this TAM LAN and how we're moving forward on that TAM LAN.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, Counselor Woodson?
Ms. Hodge, I don't know if this is the time or if this is the place or what, but I want to ask this question. A couple of weeks ago, I mentioned about the demolition funds. And I had said, was there any way that we can take part of the penny or so, to put it? No, first I said, is there any way we can take and make a separate line item for demolition by the proceeds that we get back, even though it's very few? So now I'm wondering, can part of the one sales tax be used for demolition?
No.
Okay.
Not demolition as demolishing blighted properties. I mean, obviously, if the council determined that we were going to use the existing site, that is part of the project cost for demolishing the, the structures on that site. But for eliminating blighted property, that is not city-owned property. That's obviously owned by an individual and SPOLOST cannot be used for those purposes.
Okay. You know, I'm still trying to find a way to put money into that, into a line item for them, because the community is very happy to see what's going on with Neighborhood Works and with what John is doing and then the mayor keeps talking about it. So just trying to find ways to see how we can subsidize that line item so that it can continue. It won't stop when the money ends. Thank you.
Thank you. The city managers, that all?
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Before we leave your agenda, just want to remind council, I, don't forget with this on the table that is coming up, we were, as counselors, y'all were afforded an opportunity to find somebody in your district or somebody who might be interested in hosting one of these tables for the on-the-table discussions. Fantastic opportunity if there's somebody in your district who has been really urging you about one particular issue within the community. It's a great opportunity. Just get that information to Betsy Covington and the folks at the Community Foundation. So I don't think they've heard from anybody and they're getting a little worried. All right, Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the clerk's agenda, first item are minutes of various boards to be received.
Motion second, receive the minutes. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any cares?
Next, we have board appointments. Mr. Mayor, the first are your appointments to the Columbus Island Works Convention and Trade Center Authority.
I've, I've, I'm waiting to hear back. I'll have both of those in your office by Friday.
Thank you. Next, we have council appointments that are ready to be confirmed. We have for the Board of Honor, David Ebron.
Motion.
Development Authority. Mr. Mayor, council, did you want me to go through the entire list and then confirm?
So you confirm all of them?
Yes.
Sure, that's fine.
If no one has any objections.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if somebody.
Has an objection, it's, it's difficult, I mean, you ought to do them one at a time.
Gotcha. Okay, we can do that. We had a motion.
There may not be any objections.
No, that's fine. We had a motion to confirm David Ebron for the Board of Honor. And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Next, we have the Development Authority, Mr. Chris Whitman, was nominated by Council Barnes to serve out the unexpired term of Jason Cuvaz.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Whitman. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have the Downtown Development Authority, Mr. Brad Kopich, was nominated to succeed Chris Cloninger.
I'll make that motion.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Kopich. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Also for the Downtown Development Authority, Stephen Butler, to serve another term of office.
Second.
Motion second to confirm. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Butler's confirmed.
For the Downtown Development Authority, Mr. Billy Blanchard, to serve another term.
Motion second to confirm. Any discussion on Mr. Blanchard? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Also for the Downtown Development Authority, Mr. Alan Tabor, to serve another term.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Tabor. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Tabor's confirmed.
Next, we have Land Bank Authority, Mr. Lance Hemmings.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Hemmings. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
For the Public Safety Advisory Commission, Counselor Thomas has nominated Scott Tate to succeed.
Motion second to confirm. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Tate's confirmed.
Next, the Uptown Facade Board, Mr. Wayne Bond.
There's a motion second for confirmation of Mr. Bond. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Also for the Uptown Facade Board, Raymond Brown.
Please, motion second.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Brown. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Brown's confirmed.
For the Public Safety Advisory Commission, these are district seats. For open for nominations is council district one, three, and seven. Also, the Youth Advisory Council, District Three. Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. We have the Animal Control Advisory Board. We have two seats that are open for nominations. Next, the Board of Water Commissioners. Counselor Thomas is renominating Rebecca Rumor, and we will bring this back for the next meeting. For the Personnel Review Board, we are presenting one vacant seat. For the Tree Board, for the seat of Candace Wayman, Counselor Huff is nominating Olive Kendall, and we will bring this back at the next meeting. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Do have one upcoming board appointment, and that's to the Hospital Authority.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Palmore, you asked for three additional minutes?
Ms., Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We would do the upcoming public agenda. That's Mr. Marvin Broadwater, senior.
I'm sorry. Mr. Broadwater, I apologize. I skipped right over you. Yes, sir.
The staff is telling me that Ms. Kendall is on the Building Authority and I don't know, Mr. City Attorney, if she can be on, too. She cannot, so we want to call that to your attention.
Building Authority was not one of those that we.
Yes, councilor. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Huff is aware that she is on another board. If she is confirmed to serve on the Tree Board, then she would have to make a decision as to which board she would prefer to serve, and she would have to resign from one.
Okay. Mr. Broadwater, I apologize. You've been so patient and that young man's been even more patient. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city, city council members, Mr. City Manager and City Attorney. My name is Marvin Broadwater, senior. I reside at 3004 Slippery Rock Court, Columbus, Georgia, 31909. I currently serve as the 17th Georgia State Representative of Dean Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. First, let me thank you for your servant leadership of our great community. If they could take you all and just transport you to Washington, then we'd get a whole lot done. On this evening, I give honor and homage to A.J. McClan, Leo T. Harrison, Joseph Gochek, Douglas Roland, Ben Watson, senior, Jesse Lockhart, Eddie Roberts, Franklin Douglas, William H. Perkins, and a plethora of members who have gone on to glory, who have served this great community as servant leaders. It is rare a state leader has an opportunity to lead a state meeting in his or her hometown. I am exceptionally humbled by the opportunity to host our last, our last state meeting of my tenure in my adopted hometown of Columbus. I am here to inform you that the 56th Georgia State Meeting of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity is scheduled for Columbus, Georgia, September 26th through the 29th, 2019. This is, this colossal and magnificent event would change a few landscapes in this community. We hope to see you at all of our public activities. Our theme, preserving the legacy of Omega through Christ, friendship, and the community, is one in which we believe and, and is needed for our community. We are blessed to work with the 56th Georgia State Marshal, Mr. Robert L. Anderson, and co-marshal, Mr. Travis Chambers, and Mr. Jamal Dessisher. The host chapters of this event are Lambini Oda, the Graduate Chapter here, and New Delta of Columbus State University. Following are snippets of our events planned for the meeting. The meeting opens with a golf tournament at Maple Ridge on Thursday morning, September 26th, and the public is welcome. Our community service project is Thursday, September 26th, at Open Door Community House on Second Avenue, where we will feed the homeless breakfast. All of our social events will have a portion of the proceeds donated to the local scholarship fund. And if I may add, the local chapter has donated over $600,000 to scholarships to local students headed to college over the last 74 years. We will make several donations to community partners such as Feeding the Valley Food Bank and several Title I schools for the purchase of reading books. Our public program, which you are all invited to, is Friday morning, September 27th, at 9:00 a.m. at the Trade Center. There, we will recognize elected and public dignitaries on a national, state, and local level. If you would like to see youth from around the state of Georgia in the performing arts display their talents, including one of your own, from Hardaway High School, Ms. Delilah Harris, please attend our statewide talent hunt competition on Friday, September 27th, at 6:00 p.m. We will have what is commonly known as a step show on Friday evening, September 27th, immediately following the talent hunt. Of course. Of course, we will, we will sponsor an, an old-fashioned, old-school dance and a jazz session with a world-renowned jazz artist performing on Friday, September twenty-seventh. One thing I'm particularly proud of, on Saturday, Sep- September the twenty-eighth, the host chapters will host approximately four hundred and fifty local students from different social and civic organization mentoring groups, where they will meet international celebrities, receive gifts, but most importantly, learn life and empowerment skills through several workshops, to include, but not limited to, does my attire truly matter? Why are first impressions so important, and why is an education important? We will have a founders banquet, which is our Black Tie Gala, on the evening of Saturday, September twenty-eighth, and tickets are forty dollars, and you are welcome. We will close out our meeting with a praise and worship service at the Trade Center on Sunday morning, where, where we will have a couple of local youth choirs perform. How can you help? Simply by attending and purchasing, purchasing an ad in our souvenir ad booklet. A portion of those proceeds will go to our local scholarship fund as well. Lastly, we will honor and recognize Omega men who have served in education for at least five years in the state of Georgia. This program is Saturday, September the twenty-eighth, 2019. Finally, we ask you to help at, as we paint the city of Columbus purple, and you can do that several different ways. You can wear purple all three days. Thank you very much. As we expect, anywhere from three thousand to five thousand Omega men and their wives in this town. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you for bringing the, the state conference here, we're grateful for that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all, and you all have, bless all of y'all. It's almost nine-thirty, bless all of y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Broadwater.
Continue to do what you're doing, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Palmore? Well... She can, she can use that, if we could... Is Brew Soda, we need somebody to turn that other mic on. Our technician is not there, hang on just a second. That's it. We, Sandra, would you get her the hand mic, please?
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I'm gonna start your time, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Testing, thank you. As I ended on the five-minute monologue, I did express that at the last public agenda that I attended in June, there was expression from the city manager that he would not meet with myself or my daughter, and I just wanted to point out that I had sent letters in April 2019 to the city man, uh, city attorney, and I also had sent letters to each counselor requesting a meeting with the risk manager. I have the letter from the risk manager dated March seventh, 2019, and it came addressed to my home, and my reason for wanting to put emphasis on the fact that I have asked several times since April 2018 to be heard seriously by my daughter and myself, and I did speak of the several meetings, but it got to the point of the Risk Management Division being involved, well, the risk manager wrote this letter, and the contents of the letter is very questionable, and it's very, you know, it has very dismal information saying that there was no negligence on the part of Parks and Recreation individuals in making sure that the accommodations were given to my precious family. And we came there to have a good social event, we are law-abiding citizens here in Columbus, we pay our taxes, but yet and still, we are not being given an opportunity to be heard. It's just like the statement that the city manager made about the feasibility, if you don't give the young adult who made the appointment with Columbus Parks and Rec. to be heard about the inadequacies that are in this letter, then that's unfair to my daughter, who is, who happens to be a young adult, who is law-abiding, who's moving forward in positive ways. We just want to come to a resolution by being heard by the Risk Manager Division, and we want, I would like for the city councilors to give permission by November the ninth, because that's the next time I'll be able to come before this council with this issue.
Ms. Palmore, I apologize, but your, your time has expired.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And I sure hope that you all will grant us the opportunity to hear, to meet with the Risk Manager.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, y'all, keep having a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Counselor Barnes?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just want to comment on the fantastic recruitment effort that the Chief of Police, his command staff, in conjunction with Columbus State University, Goodwill, and CSU. The event was highly successful. Two hundred and sixty-six individuals attended, and two hundred and twenty-six went through the application process for a police officer. And the chief had representation from every facet of police work, from the patrol officers to the blue, in the blue and whites, the tactical team, and the SWAT team. So the individuals had an opportunity to go up to each area and question, see, hands-on. What was really phenomenal was that the initial processes, which normally take one to six, six to eight weeks, such as the physical screening, interview, written testing, and background screening, normally takes, six to eight weeks were done with each individual in two to three hours, so the individuals really had an interest and stayed. The following day, a hundred of the applicants took the physical, that was Friday, that following Saturday, fifty, so, um, the, it's amazing. So, I mean, the chief, the Chief of Police and his command staff, along with Mr. Jack Warden, who supplied many of the volunteers from Goodwill, and also Dr. Jack Shearer, he, he conducted the physicals there. So when you figure that, out of two hundred and sixty-six individuals, two hundred and twenty-six went through the application process, that's a phenomenal, no, that's a phenomenal job by the Chief of Police, his command staff, and also kudos to Goodwill, and, and the volunteers, and to, um, Dr. Jack Shearer. And, and CSU, by the way, they had volunteers from CSU who, because the testing was done, they, they supplied the proctors for the acuplacer testing. So that was just a phenomenal job on a part of the, the Chief of Police.
It was a good job, and I know Goodwill does a fantastic job with their, with their job fairs, and in fact, we're gonna try to get together for sort of an after-incident evaluation, just to, to try to find out a way to kind of do this a couple times a year, so, I mean, you know, we, there's, we've struggled finding employees in a number of different areas, and where did these two hundred and sixty come from? We need to find out and keep, keep farming that field, so we'll, we'll do it. Counselor Thomas?
I, I just wanted to say, I have, you may recall that during the budget process, we talked with our public safety folks about taking a look at salaries and if there was anything we could do. I just wanted to let folks know that the mayor and I have had just a short conversation, and we'll be getting together probably next week to see where we can go with this and what we can do and so forth, so that'll be in the next week or so, we'll get together to do that. I just didn't, I didn't want people to think we had forgotten it and dropped it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent, thank you, ma'am. Yes. All right, we did have a request for an executive session, I believe it was on litigation, so I need a motion to go into, motion and a second to go into executive session, discuss the litigation. If we could clear the, clear the chambers, and we'll, we'll conduct our business. We are out of executive session, we discussed litigation, potential litigation, no votes were taken. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, we have one last resolution, this is just to authorize payment of attorney's fees, which may be incurred for certain legal services with the firm of Bondurant, Nixon, and Elmore in Atlanta.
Motion second to approve resolution, approving the potential fees, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? It passes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, there's another, is there any further business? No, I'll entertain them.
I don't, Anne Marie has left, Mayor, but can we go on and get a vote on the $25,000 settlement on payment, Jay Blune?
So motion and a second to approve the $25,000 payment, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion second to adjourn? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, good night.